Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. (877) 634-2638, or meganet.net.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 9th Select Board meeting. I'm Scott Zielinski. I'll be acting as the chair tonight. As you noticed, there's three Select Board members. Member Goldstone should be here at 7:00, so you'll have a four-member board. The Select Board may discuss and vote appropriate action on any item listed on this agenda unless a different disposition is noted. At the discretion of the Chair, agenda items may be taken out of order. So, at that, I would like to ask that everyone silence their cellphones and notify the Chair if you're making an audio or a video of this meeting. The placement and operation of recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Brown to read a proclamation.
This is a proclamation, National Suicide Prevention and Action Month proclamation. Whereas, with September recognized as Suicide Prevention and Action Month, the Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition invites our communities, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, and allies to join us in helping to destigmatize mental health through initiative-taking action towards suicide prevention. We seek to raise awareness and visibility of suicide prevention resources in our communities and help connect individuals with the appropriate support services such as 988. That's the phone number that people can call if they feel like they need to reach out. Whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the age of 10 and 34, with more than 49,476 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas, with an average of 132 suicide deaths daily, and each one directly impacting 125 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media connections, and neighbors, we know a sizable number of individuals have been impacted by suicide. Whereas Barnstable County's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher, standing at 14.4 per 100,000 versus the state of Massachusetts' suicide rate of 9.4 per 100,000. We recognize the need to create hope through action locally. Whereas, our local Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition works hard to spread the word about prevention, awareness, education, and action through training, forums, and events in our region. Whereas, the town of Falmouth commits to being an active prevention partner with the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition and publicly places its full support behind those who work in the field of suicide prevention and research, mental health, community health, education, and law enforcement who deal with this daily. Whereas, we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health and suicide through education and recognize that we need to take control of our mental health while we can take care of each other. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zielinski II., Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscali, and Heather M. H. Goldstone do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the town of Falmouth. And witness thereof, we hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 9th day of September 2024.
Mr. Brown. Okay, moving ahead. Any recognitions?
I do, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to...
Mr. Scali.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize that the Cape Cod Women's Association, which gives out annual awards to women over the age of 60 who have done meaningful things after the age of 60, just recently awarded such an award to Barbara Kennelopolis. I won't go on all of the things that Barbara has done. I think everyone in the community knows how much she's done for the community, but a wonderful award and very well-deserved.
All right, we're going to move on to announcements. Any announcements?
Well, just that we talked about the fact that we're adding a sort of a last-minute addition to our agenda, which was...
I'll read that.
You're going to read that?
Sure. As you know, Agenda Item 8, Vote the Articles and Exesute the Warrant for November 18, 2024 Meeting. For the timeline adopted by the Select Board in July, this Board will vote the articles to be included on the town meeting warrant. Discussion on whether or not to include the 37 proposed articles on the town meeting warrant will be limited to Board members. Any resident who wishes to comment on the merits of these articles is encouraged to write the Select Board and/or to attend the Select Board meeting on October 7th, at which the Board will take public comment before voting recommendations on these articles sponsored by this Board. As a reminder, this Board does not vote a recommendation on articles sponsored by the Planning Board or Community Preservation Committee. The recommendations submitted to the town meeting for all financial articles is submitted by the Finance Committee.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
If I could make another brief announcement, we had a modification, amendment to this evening's agenda. On consent agenda, we added, under administrative orders, consider appointing a temporary registrar in the event that an existing registrar is unable to fulfill their duties during the recount for the Office of Senator and the General Court in the Republican State Primary this Thursday, September 12th. Mr. Chair and Select Board members, you have a copy of the memo, the letter issued by the Board of Registars indicating the need, perhaps, of having a temporary registrar appointed by the Select Board this evening. Michael Palmer, I met with him briefly this morning, Peter and I did, and indicated that his recommendation, Michael Palmer's recommendation as Town Clerk, would be the Select Board consider under the consent item, Catherine Bumpus as being that temporary registrar.
This is for the primary recount?
Correct, yes, sir.
Just one question, Mr. Zielinski. And admittedly, I am still working my way through being a Select Board member in the process, and town meeting and the warrant has always been a little confusing to me. But it has been my understanding that in the past, even at this stage, public comment on articles has been permitted. So I'm just curious as to why this evening, the decision by the Chair is made to limit that public comment.
It was a recommendation. Do you want to take this?
Sure. So, you know, there was some email correspondence the town manager had, and he asked about what the past practice has been. And my understanding of the past practice is that there has not been a debate of every article proposed to be included on the town meeting warrant at this meeting. Certainly, it would be the discretion of the Chair if a very brief comment is going to be allowed, but it can become difficult to, you know, to manage. Are we going to debate the article and the merits of each article? Because there are 37 of them. And the question tonight, I think the point of emphasis, is, is the Board comfortable proceeding with including these articles on the town meeting warrant? That's the decision for tonight. And then the merits of the article, there's time for public input on that between now and the Select Board voting its recommendations. And there are different venues for the public to weigh in on the merits of the article. If they're planning articles, it would be with the Planning Board. If they're financial, it would be with the Finance Committee, and then, of course, debate on the town meeting floor.
Wait, because I do understand that, I think, some people were hoping to be able to make some short comments, not debate the articles. And I understand with 37 articles or whatever, it could become very...
And as the Chair, I would certainly rather have that proposed debate or conversation with a full Board rather than three Board members. The Chair is out of town, and Ms. Goldstone is going to be late. So I didn't want to take that on with just three Board members.
It's your decision, Mr. Chair.
Fair enough.
Yep.
All right. We're going to move on to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in discussion of the topic. That being said, is anybody like Mr. Doobie, please?
Richard Doobie, Blacksmith Shop, Row. Good evening. I want to talk about fiduciary responsibility. I've heard that term used several times over the past months in response to firearms purchases in Falmouth. Term has been used as financial action when it's not. The attorneys here, and you've got two of them sitting right here, will tell you that what it simply means is when one undertakes a responsibility to do what's in the best interest of another party. As Select Board members, you are supposed to be acting in the best interest of the citizens of Falmouth. When it comes to town-owned firearms, I feel that you have failed in your fiduciary responsibility. We now have a history of ill-prepared and misleading articles presented to town meeting for the purchase of firearms. We have never received an article for the purchase of firearms requiring a trade-in, yet trade-ins are a much debated topic. Through town-leading votes and appearances before this Board, it is apparent that our citizens want surplus firearms destroyed. We feel it's in the best interest of our town. I have included on the pages I am leaving for you a copy of 30B as it pertains to the disposal of surplus property. The words "aggregate" and "aggregation" do not appear a single time in 30B. There is no single firearm in question valued at $10,000. If there is a question on the content of 30B, it is your fiduciary responsibility to direct Town Council to contact the Attorney Generals or the Inspector General's Office to clarify our position. It is her fiduciary responsibility to do so to ensure the destruction of surplus firearms. And with that, I'd like to give you a handout that you can hold.
You can leave them right at the end of the table. I'll make sure they get passed out, Mr. Doobie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Mr. Clarkson?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. My name is Troy Clarkson, and I come tonight to vigorously oppose the position taken by this Board to not allow public comment on warrant articles. Selectman Muscali is absolutely correct. There's a long precedent of allowing public input. I would remind the Board that when this form of government was implemented in 1991, there were three pillars to the form of government that we have. One was professional management, which we have here tonight. The other was an elected Select Board that were representatives of the people, and that's you and your job. And the third is an engaged and informed citizenry, which we obviously have here tonight. To deny those citizens the ability, the right, to provide feedback on warrant articles and vote them and then say, "Well, we'll take public comment later," is so antithetical to the form of government that we have, that it not only saddens me, but frankly, it angers me that the Board, elected to represent the people who are here in this room, would hold that same public in such disdain and not allow them input. To suggest that the input will come after you've already made a decision whether or not to include an article sends a very clear message to the public here tonight and those watching at home that our opinions are valued less than yours. That is not the form of government we have, and that is not what you, as Select Board members, were elected to do. So I urge you, Mr. Chair, which is well within your authority, to allow public comment on these warrant articles. Because I, for one, know at least one of them has been hastily put together, only shared with this Board for the first time on Friday, and you're expected to decide tonight whether or not to include it on a warrant and send it off to town meeting. That's not good government. That's not open government, and we all deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. Anyone else? Sir?
Good evening, everyone. Dave Moriarty, Falmouth Math. I just want to, I hope everyone had a safe and joyful summer in Falmouth, despite the failed Wind Project out there on Nantucket Shoal. I mean, Nantucket, off of Nantucket, the Vineyard Wind Project with its inferior blades. They're going to keep breaking. They're not going to stop breaking. They cheapened out on the polyresins to put on the blades. That's why they're failing, and they're going to continue to fail. And the federal government, the state government, they just don't want to listen to reality, unfortunately. Did you know that 38 out of our 40 illustrious senators...
Moriarty, could you...
I'm so sorry. 38 of our 40 illustrious senators, and our two senators who represent the Cape and Islands, voted to take away your rights, take away your home rule, and your ability to govern your own town and your own community. Because they want to push this New World Agenda failed energy program on everyone. They're banging on our doors. They want to steal our shores. They want to take our natural resources. And I just think that is totally tyrannical, in my view. Our governor, Haley, you know, she's not in reality. She does not have her feet on the ground like the citizens of Falmouth and the people of the Cape and Islands. We depend on the sea. We depend on tourism. We have 100-year-old industries that are just about to crumble so we can double our electric bills, push all our poor people out of town. This is just unacceptable. It's unacceptable, especially in Massachusetts. The Cradle of Liberty, come on, give me a break. And look what the Board is trying to do to us tonight. They're trying to prevent us from commenting on articles. Can't you see what's happening here? The New World Order is here. It's banging on the door, and you better not let it in, because once it gets in, you're never going to get it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. Anybody else? Sir?
Hello. My name's Ken Hollen. I'm a relatively new resident of Falmouth. Moved here about four years ago. My wife and I bought a piece of property in the grass, near Self Division. This is what, on page we bought. This is according to the map, map book 208, page 93, in the Barnstable Book of Maps. When I finished doing the interior home fix-up, I started going outside to clear land. We had dense brush so thick in our backyard that the location of a fire hydrant, the closest one to our house and our neighbor's house, had been totally obliterated and forgotten by the town. And once I called them, they came out and flushed it out. And great, but that was what it was. It turns out, a neighbor came over and said I might have been in violation of wet land regulations, so I went and checked with them. They claim that they own, the state owns, this much of our land. We have just this little green part here. This is totally under state control. This is provisionally under state control. And that is, again, as opposed to what the platmat says. It says we are granted 19,400 square feet of land to use ourselves. So I find this an abuse, even though this taking, this confiscation of the use of the land is sanctioned by the state, in fact, probably initiated by the state with help from local jurisdictions. It is still theft. And though it has, for its reason, or for the spring for it, it has a sound ecological reason, which is better water on the Cape in Falmouth, it is still theft. And my wife and I are the ones who are bearing the brunt of the cost and the responsibility of this as unwilling, unhappy, and imperfect residents or stewards of this little vernal pool on our land. This is what's causing all the trouble. This little, and this is the largest extent. This is the highest water in the spring. Right now, it's just a little rocky-bottomed mud hole. So, you know, my wife and I benefit as residents of Falmouth for having a clean environment and stuff. But we, the two of us, comprise the population of Falmouth of 2021 was given as 35,500, something like that. So our benefit from this is so small, it's 0.000610,000ths of the part of what we benefit. Meanwhile, we can't put in a vegetable garden there, which would reduce our grocery bills...
Sir, you're going to have to wrap this up. We generally give two minutes.
Okay, okay. So this is theft. This is confiscation, and I strongly object to it. And I, you know, I just want people to know that this is happening, that the state is confiscating 85% of our land.
Thank you. Jed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. For the record, my name is Jed Cornoch, your Town Planner. I just want to take an opportunity to announce and encourage folks to attend our public meeting, which we're holding this Thursday at the Mullen Hall Elementary School cafeteria from 6:00 to 7:30, as you can see up on the screen. We've been working on a downtown parking management plan, and we're bringing it all to the public this Thursday. So we just wanted to announce it and encourage folks to attend. It will be an hour and a half, and we ask that folks come and tell us what they think about the recommendations and all the information that we're going to be providing. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I ask you a question, Scott? Jed?
It's public comment. He's coming back up for something else.
No, we'll ask him later. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, we're going to move into, mind me, Town Manager to affirm Director of Veteran Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're really excited tonight to welcome the newest team member with the town of Falmouth, Mr. Jim Guzias. We're bringing Mr. Guzias forward for affirmation for the Veteran Services Officer position. As you know, Mr. Don Lincoln recently retired. You have a copy of Mr. Guzias's resume in your packets this evening. Jim is a highly qualified candidate. We had, I believe, over 80 applications that were filed. Oh, I'm sorry. Wow, I misspoke. We had a lot of applications submitted in a very talented pool of candidates. Jim clearly rose to the top. I want to thank the panel members for participating in the interviews that were held a couple of weeks ago. Jim brings over 26 years of experience in the U.S. Army, serving as Staff Sergeant, Section Leader, Unit Logistician, and Administrator. During Mr. Guzias's military service, he participated in five deployments and received eight Army Commendation Medals for Logistics Excellence. So he is clearly an organizer. In addition to his military service, Mr. Guzias has five years of experience working as a full-time Veteran Employment Counselor for the state, for the Massachusetts Department of Career Services, in which he assisted veterans with very significant challenges, secure, sustainable employments. In this role, Jim initiated community engagement programs to reach a wider population of veterans. And I think I can say this, during the interview process, Jim really impressed the panel by his ability and his commitment to that engagement and outreach, so we're excited to bring that skill set to the position. Mr. Guzias has more than five years of additional experience working as a Family Support Coordinator, Social Worker, and Assistant Counselor. Jim is a licensed social worker and a certified veteran mediator, and his references were clearly outstanding. We're thrilled to bring his strong case management experience, excellent work ethic, ability to connect with people from all backgrounds, and passion, real true passion, for helping veterans in Falmouth. As Mr. Guzias resides in Plymouth, Mr. Chair and Select Board members were requesting that the Board also consider waiving the Division Head residency requirement as stated in Article 5, Section 4 of the Town Charter. I'm really excited about this next part. If affirmed tonight, Jim is scheduled to start on September 23rd, so we'll have a very short window, and we're excited to have Jim on board. So, Mr. Chairman and Select Board members, it's my recommendation that the Select Board approve and affirm the appointment of Jim Guzias as the Town's Director of Veteran Services, and I'm also recommending that the Select Board waive the Division Head residency requirement for Mr. Guzias, as stated again in Article 5, Section 4 of the Town Charter.
Mr. Chair, first of all, commendations to Susan and her staff and the people on the interview committee. I mean, this is a very important position, we all know, but it's only been vacant now for a little less than, you know, two weeks. So, you know, really, a great job out of 100 applicants to find such a well-qualified candidate. So I'd be happy to make a motion to approve and affirm the appointment of Jim Guzias as the Town Director of Veteran Services.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Hold it in favor.
Aye.
I'd like to say some...
Second, you want me to go to the second motion? Yep. And I'd also make a motion to waive the Division Head residency requirement for Mr. Guzias.
I would second that as well.
We have a motion and a second. Hold it in favor.
Aye.
Now, welcome.
Thank you. I suppose to keep this brief. I wish to express how grateful I am for considering me to be your next Director of Veteran Services. I'd like to thank everyone involved within the hiring process, a process that exemplified a high degree of professionalism. I would also like to thank the Select Board for considering me for this opportunity. Upon retiring from military service, I found my calling within the social work profession. I have dedicated my post-military career to the continuance of service, service to our community and service to our veterans. I have also considered service to others as my mission, and service to my fellow veterans is a privilege and honor, and most of all, a duty. I am humbled by the faith that your selection committee has placed upon me to perform the duties of this position for the veterans of Falmouth. I assure you, I will perform my duties with the utmost professionalism, and most of all, with empathy and understanding for my veteran brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, that being said, we will move into our business agenda. Report from the Veterans Council Committee, 15 minutes.
You want your 15 minutes?
You got 15 minutes.
Okay. Won't be a long...
Or at least five.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and the rest of the Select Board, Town officials. We have a very brief report this year. We, the Veterans Council Committee, met monthly, and except for our summer recess, in addition to the two events that the town holds, the observances of veteran events, we also attended around town some other similar observances and different services for the committee.
Carissa, did you introduce yourself?
Oh, I suppose I didn't. I'm Carissa April, the Chair of the Veterans Council Committee.
Thank you.
Thanks again. And we took a look in the beginning of the calendar year. We started to look at some vacancies and some seats that were not being filled regularly. So we took a look at how else we might fill those positions. We recommended the Cape and Islands Veteran Outreach Center, which is a nonprofit organization supporting veterans across the Cape and the Islands, to have a permanent seat as members of the committee, and that was approved by you, as you know, and so we're looking forward to that addition to the council. And on behalf of the committee, we'd like to thank the outgoing Director of Veteran Services, Don Lincoln, and encourage him and wish him the best in his retirement, and we look forward to working with Jim Guzias and the new director and supporting the Office of Veteran Services in whatever way we can.
Any questions?
Thank you for your service. It's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, sir.
While Carissa is here, I just want to publicly...
While Carissa is here, I just want to publicly thank her for participating in our interview panel. She represented the council in the interview process. It was great to have her perspective as a veteran, as a member of the council, and as one of the leaders of the, the service center that is operating out of the former senior center. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, a report on Council on Aging. Jill, is that you tonight?
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Jill Clancy, Chairman of Council on Aging. I'm accompanied by, as you know, Jill Evering Bishop, Assistant Director, and Jamie McDonald, our current chairman. We're here to tell you about the things that we've done in 2024 at the Council on Aging. We met ten times during the fiscal year. During the fiscal year, we had myself, Brenda Swain was co-chairman, Sue Gallagher, Dave Hearn, Betsy Hyke, Carol Kenny, Jamie McDonald, Kevin Murphy, and Pamela Truesdale, members. The board continues to support the mission of the senior center. We have continued to focus on policy review and discussion with Senior Services Director and staff. We have reviewed and supported ten policies through the fiscal year. The enrollment, visitor, and caregiver policies were also approved by this Select Board at your July fifteenth meeting. All participants, who are residents and non-residents, were informed of the new policies that were implemented September first. In collaboration with the staff, a survey was developed and released to gather input on current and future program needs. The staff received one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven responses. The survey results will help guide the Director and the staff in developing new initiatives and operational goals. The Recognition Wall Committee met on June tenth to review the submitted applications. There were seven applications, and two people were selected in appreciation of their service to the Council on Aging and the Senior Center. The Council on Aging Board will announce and present the first wall of recognition recipients at an event to be scheduled in December. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Jill.
Good evening. I just want to share a few updates as we close out fiscal year twenty-four. As you can see, our new enrollment was one thousand three hundred and forty-six new participants. That brings us to a total of seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five Falmouth residents and residential taxpayers. Just a little bit of info, that is, you know, within three years of people signing up, so the increase just continues to grow. And I have to say, as we kicked into September, and some of our new policies, we've had a lot more people signing up in the past two weeks. I think they're anxious that they might not get into the center, so. If you look at our service unit number, it's seventy-two thousand three hundred and forty-six service units, and so that's every interaction a participant has utilizing the Senior Center, so it really truly shows you how well and how often the center is used, and that is about almost a twelve percent increase from fiscal year twenty-three. Couple of the highlights that we have, our transportation with one van driver provided three thousand two hundred and ninety-eight rides to participants, covering over eighty-five thousand miles. Our Heights, Senior Heights Fitness Room, we now have seven hundred and fifteen participants who have concluded the orientation, with having six thousand six hundred and fifty-five check-ins using the fitness room. One of them's right there. Our Senior Center Chappie Cafe, which is always a highlight to everybody, actually, we had nineteen thousand sixty-four check-ins. And some of our new program initiatives to add to the mix of what we do, we've added some art programs, cooking classes, we're always increasing our educational programs, a genealogy class, and also, we've added a couple more support groups and technology classes that not only do assist on one-on-one, small-group classes, but also larger-group classes. I'd also like to thank our Friends Board, which is our fundraising board. They help support our Coffee Conversation Educational Series, our socials with our bingo and cornhole and breakfast socials, our holiday lunches, and especially our volunteer appreciation events that we hold in the fall and in the spring. Couple highlights on our outreach. So, we are fortunate to still have our outreach coordinator serves on the Elder Services Board of Directors in serving Falmouth. We continue with our outreach support and professional services, referrals, and programs are ongoing. Our REACH, Reaching Elders and Additional Community, that is what we receive from the police and fire, which I always say are our eyes and ears in the community. Once they see something happening, our center gets a REACH referral, and our outreach is able to go to the home and help people connect them to either the services or the programs or any type of assistance that they need. So, in FY twenty-four, we received thirty-two REACH referrals. We also meet monthly with the Senior Municipal Support Team, which is the police, the fire, the senior services, and human services, and we also have added the addition of the social workers with the police department. We reviewed twenty-two current cases, thirty-three new cases, and we closed twenty-eight cases. We continue with establishing and enhancing partnerships. With Elder Services, we held a Thanksgiving grab-and-go meal, and they also provided us with a ten-week computer senior planning class, and that's just some of the fun stuff. They're right there with us of getting help with protective services, you know, elders' abuse, and getting people services in the home. Adrian Woodbrier last year, and they continue this year, is doing guarding ads for senior participants and all the tools that were provided. We have about a dozen seniors that partake in this program. They've also been gracious to allow us access to the pool, so we're able to offer aquatic exercise classes, which is group-led through the V and A, which we also offer a number of programs through. Another thing we started this year was to bring services into the Senior Center. So, we have established monthly info tables that people pick whichever day is appropriate and into their schedules, and we continue to add to this. So, we've had the Consumer Assistance Council, the Service Center, grandparents raising grandchildren, Independence House, the Town of Falmouth Veterans Department, and WECAN, and this list, I hope, will continue. So, here is where I'd like to thank, I have an amazing staff. I also have great COA Board members and Friends Board members, but our volunteers, really, between all these programs and services, we can't do without them. They provided nine thousand four hundred and fifty-five hours in FY twenty-four. We recruit, we train, and we continually, you know, offer new opportunities for volunteers to partake in the Senior Center. And again, thank you to our Friends Group for hosting the staff appreciation events, both in the, in the fall and in the spring. So, I'll leave you with this. Senior Center, National Senior Center Month is September. When we opened the new center, we never got our grand opening, so what we started to kick off was an annual open house. So, on Monday, September sixteenth, from four to six, we'd like to invite all the members of our community to come in, take a tour of the center, come and meet some of our municipal, our local, and state agencies that we partner with. And so, we invite you all because we would want family and friends to come to learn about what we have to offer so they can help their loved ones get connected to the Senior Center.
Hi, Jamie McDonald, current Chair of the Council. Just, I hope you really looked at these numbers. They're not going down, and what a job that Jill does. So, that's, I want to get that out there, give her lots of kudos, pats on the back. And the other thing is, we're starting to, the murmurs about the new police station, we're thinking at times that, as I said, murmurs. I hope if there is a master plan that comes up, that we look at this as a real, true municipal recreational complex, along with the recreational committee. Thanks, and thanks for your support.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No. Very familiar with the Chappie Cafe.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you. We are going to discuss the recently completed town-owned parcel inventory analysis. Jed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, for the record, my name is Jed Kornok. I'm your town planner. I'm just going to pull up the information for you. So, I'll start from the top. We, the Planning Department, and I, just like Jill, will give kudos to my staff as well, we've been working on this analysis of town property that the town obviously owns, as you can see up on the screen, to develop a comprehensive inventory of everything we own and decide what its best future use is moving forward. As you can see up on the, on the screen, we began this analysis sometime in twenty-twenty-three, although it's, time is flying, so it's hard to remember exactly when we started. But what I can say to you is that in August last month, we presented this information to our department heads, and we went through, you know, exhaustive conversation about each one of these parcels. We're here tonight to present the results of that effort, and later this week, I'll be before the Affordable Housing Committee, presenting this, this same presentation. And I do want to emphasize, although I'm about to get to it on the next slide, is that it's really about analyzing each one of the properties for its future use. So, some of these examples, as you'll see, maybe we keep it for some other future use that the town has in mind, but obviously, we're in a housing crisis, and one of the ideas or concepts is to dispose of some of these, this land for potential affordable housing. So, I'll get to that detail in a second. So, right off the top, here's a summary of the amount of properties that we started with. So, we used the most recent assessor's database. Starting at the very beginning, we had five hundred and seventy-six total properties, so the town owns a lot of land. Of that, we whittled it down to four hundred and four properties that we would take a closer look at, because a hundred and seventy-two of them, as you can see up on the screen, are owned by the Conservation Commission. That typically means that they have conservation restrictions, and therefore, future development is simply not possible. So, of those four hundred and four, because it would take so long to go through all of those, we prioritize properties over two acres. So, that whittled it down to a hundred and thirty-two properties, and beyond that, we started an initial screening, which I'll go through in a second. We got down to thirty-three properties that had some sort of development potential. Then, we screened them again and came up with twenty-two properties, which are included in the presentation in new packets, and we divided them into two categories, keep or dispose of for some other affordable housing purpose. So, put in a better way, graphically, start at five hundred and seventy-six, all of the filters that I just described, we make our way down to twenty-two properties that are included in the presentation. And please, along the way, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So, I'm going to step through the methodology. We've already covered step one, again, taking off anything that had Conservation Commission ownership. Then, the initial screening, as I mentioned before, that's essentially where we created four different categories, as you can see. There's developed, so a property that already has an active use, one of those might be, say, the town hall, right? It's an active use, but there may be some additional land that might be available for development, so we didn't want to take it off the table initially, we just simply categorized it as developed. Then, you have environmental, open space, and possible. So, environmental, it's pretty clear, if there was a certain challenge on the property, national heritage, wildlife habitats, a significant amount of wetlands, or some sort of challenge that would make development not possible, we categorize it as environmental, open space, fairly simple, if it had a deed restriction, let's say, or if our G I S system indicated that it was protected, we can categorize it as such. And then, lastly, possible. So, again, properties that didn't meet the, the first three, but potentially had some development potential in the future. Now, I will say that it was challenging to create these four categories, and a lot of the properties ended up having two or three of these categories into one, so it's a, it's a mad scientist's experiment, but these are at least the beginning. And so, here are some examples of what I'm talking about, where you combine them. So, on the left-hand side is the parking lot behind the Peg Newton Park, goes all the way over to Eastman's. So, that's clearly a developed property. It's being actively used as a parking facility, one that I may mention we need desperately, and that we'll be talking about in more detail on Thursday, September twelfth, at six P.M. to seven-thirty at the Mullen Hall Elementary School Cafeteria.
I'll stop you there, Jeff, but that was my question. Can you just tell people where they can go to find that, those recommendations now, so people could look at them?
There aren't any recommendations publicly available yet, so we, we're asking people to come to the meeting and see the work that went into it, and then give us their feedback at the meeting.
Okay.
We will post the presentation afterward and offer people an opportunity to weigh in via email or some other form after that.
Thank you.
Figured you needed a segue. So, on the right-hand side, you have an example of an open space or environmental property. So, again, clearly a salt marsh, it's not going to be used for anything in the future, categorized as sort of whittle down the population, if you will, of the properties that we had to go through. This came the fun part. So, this was our evaluation component, asked a series of questions about the property, specifically, does it meet minimum lot size requirements, and does it have legal frontage? Those two items are incredibly important in the planning world, because you can't get a building permit if you don't have frontage. Then, significant topography issues, are there protected wildlife areas or wetlands present? Zone two, surface water protections, you get the, the sense. Is it in a flood zone? And importantly, what year was it obtained? How was it obtained? And is there a deed restriction on the property? So, all of these questions are yes or no's. So, this is just a snippet of what the database looks like. So, on the left-hand side, in the gray columns, those are, you know, the, the properties themselves. On the right-hand side, where you see all the purple, that's the questions. And so, for the properties, a hundred and thirty-two properties or so, we did a yes or no analysis, using mostly the G I S online system, but then clearly the Registry of Deeds to find deed restrictions if there were present. Then, our last step was to take that small population that we whittled down to thirty-three properties, and then make an assessment, and again, importantly, bring it to the department heads, but make an assessment about its development potential. So, it, you basically have three categories, just like a stoplight. A good candidate doesn't have environmental issues, doesn't lie in a zone two, doesn't have wetlands, it has the minimum lot size for that zoning district, it also has the legal frontage. Then, on the very end, you have a poor candidate, so it's got a lot of issues. It might have wetlands on the site, it may not have frontage, it may be landlocked. There are significant issues with it being developed. And then, of course, in the middle is what we call a moderate candidate. So, each one of these categories ended up with eleven properties, so it was odd to see that, but it just so happens to be in that way. So, I've got the next thirty-three slides, which I will try to go through as quickly as possible, to outline those, those properties, and keep your eye on the left-hand side, that's where we categorized the type of development potential. So, property number one, East Falmouth Highway, this is located across the street from Seaco Shores, just happens to be a vacant property, two and a half acres, as you can see up on the screen, no environmental issues, it was acquired in two thousand and one through a purchase. It is deed restricted for municipal purposes, so our understanding is that that was a potential site for a lift station, sewer lift station. So, it's possible that this could be used for that purpose and for affordable housing. So, on the bottom right on the screen, you can see, we've got a dual recommendation here. It's dispose of for housing and potentially keep for town use. Now, we, I call that out because it's uncertain at this time, so we're sort of holding that back as, you know, getting rid of, obviously because of the current sewer situation and the water quality situation that we're, that we're facing. So, property number one. Property two and three, these are located at Zero West Falmouth Highway. Hover over the screen. So, this is the Sippewissett Interchange, so it's right before you come into town. These two properties were acquired way back in nineteen thirty-one timeframe. They're in the public use district, they're both vacant, as you can see. This is a recommendation based on no outstanding environmental issues or issues with flood zones. This may be two good... This may be two good properties that we can dispose of for affordable housing. I mentioned them in the, in the report, and I believe that they may be, or that they're on the board for consideration. Properties four and five, Zero Locust Field Road, two, two properties back to back. Again, won't go into the details. You can see them on the screen. But the basic here is that there's potential for affordable housing. There was some discussion on whether or not it should be kept for town municipal use, but we just couldn't come up with something that might go there. So we've essentially recommended disposing them for affordable housing.
Jed, hold up. Was that one of the properties that was looked at for the police station? That Zero Locust Field? In that original discussion of three or four properties, right? That's, that's the one we were talking about?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And at, and at that time, it was presented as a, as an example of the type of analysis that we were doing.
Thank you.
So then there's 81 Davisville Road. We, I think we all know the history with this property. Again, no environmental issues. It's in a flood, it's not in a flood zone. It's got plenty of land. And so our recommendation is to continue to consider disposing it for housing, perhaps not at this time, with the issues that we faced during our Emerald Properties project. But it's still on the table. It's still an option. And again, it's one of those examples of, you know, is there a municipal use that could go there? And we just couldn't come up with something that would be, that would fit the character of that neighborhood. So we are recommending disposing for housing. Zero Thomas Landers. So this is property number seven. This was acquired back in 2001. I want to just call out a major difference here. Again, it's a vacant property, as you can see, but it was purchased with the Cape Cod Open Space and Land Acquisition Program. I love acronyms, so I'm going to put them up on the screen whenever I can. That also protects the property for, as you can see, public water supply, open space, conservation, et cetera. So that's an example of a property that the town obtained and can use for municipal use, or at least for a limited amount of municipal use. And that's an important factor here. So we're limited on what we can do here. We certainly cannot do housing because it was acquired with the land acquisition program. So we have to hold on to it. The question is, for what? And what can fit there? So our recommendation at this time is to continue researching that, but hold on to it for town use. 340 T-Ticket Highway. This is property number eight. Clearly, it's the school administration and softball recreation field. Again, we're going to recommend that we keep that property, understanding that this is actually one of the only good candidate properties that actually is developed. And the reason for that is because you can clearly see there's a development potential there. We're not claiming that, you know, you can remove the softball field and just move it anywhere, but there's some land there that could be used at some time in the future. And so with that, we just say, hold on to it, and let's take a closer look. This is 419 Woods Hole Road, property number nine. Many of you may remember the Webster Woods Initiative. I was not here for that, but that was roughly the 2004, 2007 timeframe, is my understanding. This one is not without its challenges. This is down on Woods Hole Road, as you know. It's within the Coastal Pond Overlay District, which you can see here. I'll call these out. So here's their zoning district, Residential B. And then under other, we have Coastal Pond Overlay District, which is C P O D. N S A is, stands for sensitive area. And then you may have seen Water Resource Protection Overlay District. So these are restrictive overlay districts, which limit the amount of development that you can have. That's why we put them up there. So there's environmental challenges. The recommendation here is to dispose of for housing at a later date. Figure out, do some more research on the property, do some public outreach. But the basic premise here is to consider for. Property number 10, 632 T-Ticket Highway, also known as the Augusta Property. Acquired in 2003, again, with using that land acquisition program. So we're limited in what we can actually use it for. Housing not being one of those things. So the recommendation is to keep for town use. But 20 acres of land, what a bit of land there. Property number 11, last one in the good category, Zero Carriage Shop Road. Acquired in 2004, again, with the Cape Cod Land Acquisition Program. This one is unique and different in a way because a portion of the property was carved out for municipal use. So generally speaking, it's this lower left-hand square. 14 acres, when we acquired the property, was carved out for municipal use, which is not restricted by the land acquisition program. So the remainder of the property, the 57 acres, is and cannot be used for that purpose. But the recommendation at this time is to keep it for municipal use. This was actually one of the locations that might be used as a discharge site for wastewater. Again, complicated situation that we're in. So we're recommending to keep it for town use. Now into the moderate. Any questions on the good candidates? We've been to the moderate, and I'll go a little quicker. We have several examples of these types of properties in town. So this was a subdivision. It's located just south of Route 151. It's an open piece of land that clearly has some sort of recreational use, which is right here, probably an old tennis court. It was acquired in 1985. It's a potential property for housing because they may not be using it for the intended purpose back in when the subdivision was approved. So it's not without its challenges. You can see Coastal Pond Overlay, nitrogen-sensitive water resource, but it's an option for potentially another housing unit. Properties two and three in the moderate candidate are Zero Nathan Ellis Highway and Zero Falmouth Woods Road. The Nathan Ellis property is this small sliver, and the Falmouth Woods Road is much larger. The complication with these two properties is the larger triangle doesn't have legal frontage along 151, so it needs to be merged with the larger one, or the smaller sliver. The issue with the smaller sliver is that we were, we acquired that for roadway purposes. And so we would need to do a little bit more research on, can we combine them? Can we change that purpose? And can that be disposed of in the future? So there's still some more work that needs to get into them. So that's why it has that dual recommendation for housing or potential municipal use. Blacksmith Shop Road, moderate candidate number four, 3.8 acres. This is just south of the wastewater treatment facility, which is located just on the screen here. We acquired it in 2003. There's no clear deed restriction. So it's one of those situations where it's an oddly shaped parcel. It's possible that we might be able to do something there. It does have some topography issues. So we did this dual recommendation to keep or dispose of in the future at some point. So property number 16, Water Tower up at the Tech Park. Clearly, it's being used for municipal use. Acquired in 2000. As you can see, it's got some restrictions. The basic premise here is to recommend to continue to use it for town use. 233 Burke Hill Road. This is the site of the dog park. So, you know, at first glance, it looks like there's an awful lot of land in the back that could potentially be used. We didn't see the opportunity for affordable housing. Believe when we, when we acquired the, the property, there was a deed restriction on its use. But, so the recommendation at this point is to keep her of future municipal use. Nine and a half acres, though. High school property. Zero Thomas B. Landers Road, another large property located just north of the Tech Park. And essentially, it's a property that doesn't have legal frontage. So at this point, what we're suggesting is that it remains in town use. There may be an opportunity some, sometime down the road to combine it with an adjacent parcel, but that requires an awful lot of moving parts. So for, for the time being, keep it as municipal use. Another example of a developed property, you know, as mentioned before, police station's on the table. There's a lot of municipal deeds. Clearly, we're going to be recommending to keep this as a town use. What happens inside the property is another conversation that happens in the future. Obviously, it's the high school at 1200 Gifford Street Extension. This site is particularly challenging due to the topography on the west-hand side of the school. It doesn't have any clear environmental issues. It was acquired back in the day. Again, another one of those examples of keep for town use. Moderate candidate number 10, 565 Blacksmith Shop Road. A very large parcel. It's clearly being used as the lead composting area, which is, I'm brush, I should say, up in this area. It does have some environmental challenges. A lot of wetlands, some national heritage. And the property was deed restricted as for gravel purpose, or gravel pit purpose. So there's some challenges here. We're recommending to keep it as town use. And then last category on the moderate, last property, is the wastewater treatment facility. This is the property that I was talking about earlier. Small, strange-shaped parcel just south of the wastewater treatment facility. Clearly, there's a ton of land up here, 314 acres. So the analysis ran the gamut from 314 acres to less than a pea-sized piece of land. So there's an awful lot of information to go through. But this represents the largest one we have. We're all familiar with what's going on up there. And so we're still trying to figure out. But the clear indication here is to keep it for town use. So poor candidates. Here's an example of a good one, a good poor candidate. So we have a part, piece of property that we've acquired back in 200, in 1983. Has no deed restriction, doesn't have any environmental challenges, but it doesn't have frontage. So it's landlocked. So it's an opportunity for us to potentially do something in the future, but it would be complicated to do so. So recommendation is to keep it for town use. This one I thought was going to be a good candidate. So this is Zero Dillingham Road off. So this is located behind the nursing home just in front of the Veteran Center. This one, again, no frontage. It's a decent-sized property. It does have some environmental issues. It is possible, but at the current time, it's, we're considering it to be a poor candidate simply because there's an awful lot of work that would have to go into trying to figure out how to move it forward for development. These are sort of running a theme. Lack of frontage. This is Zero Sandwich Road off. Three, almost three and a half acres of land. It's located behind the, I'm trying to remember the thrift store, I believe. Again, no frontage. So it would require some effort to merge properties and create that frontage. It was acquired some time ago. There's no deed restriction. There's no environmental challenges. So we're recommending to keep it for town use, but still work on, is it possible to develop it in the future? 181 Fire Tower Road, poor candidate number four. This is actually where the fire tower exists. Fire Tower Road just runs right through it. I don't know that I need to go into any more detail here, but we're recommending to keep it for town use. Topography up there is a significant challenge. This one's one of my favorites. Poor candidate number five. This is Zero Dimmick Ave. When I first looked at this, I said, why is a property named Dimmick Ave? Very strange. So this is actually part of an old subdivision. It's actually one of the ones that planners use, or at least they use in training sessions. This was an old subdivision back in the, I want to say it was the seventies, where this property simply just ceased to be a way. So it was a way that would connect to future land. You can almost see it on the screen. There's a paper street outline here. I'm not going to go into too much more, but we're essentially keeping it for town use because we don't see any possibility for its development for affordable housing. Then there's the Lakefield School. A lot of land, again, that's currently being used as a school. Still researching some of the history there, but we are recommending keep for town use. The schools are, a lot of the schools end up in this poor category, which you're going to see in just a second. So Zero Blacksmith Shop Road. This is located just across the street from the composting facility. No environmental issues. Acquired it back in 87, but it is deed restricted for disposal purposes. So it's one of those properties that we're simply just recommending at this time to just hang on to and not put too much effort into figuring out its development while we've got some other good candidates to focus on. Property number eight, East Falmouth Elementary. Property number nine, Morse Pond Elementary. Property 10, North Falmouth Elementary. There's some land in the back, but there's actually a lot of wetlands and national heritage endangered species on that property. So there's just not a lot of opportunity there, hence the poor candidate. And the last one, 630 Carriage Shop Road. It's the Falmouth Country Club. As you can clearly see, it's being utilized as a golf course, and it wouldn't make sense to change that. But certainly an opportunity in the future if it presents itself. It's 81 acres. And so right now, we're recommending to keep it for town use. So last slide. Our next steps are now to continue to analyze the properties that are under two acres in size. So that's a lot of work. Continue to develop these warrant articles that you find appropriate for disposition for affordable housing. And then the idea is to share this database, once it's fully complete, with all of the town department heads and stakeholders so that everyone can make an informed decision about future development of these properties. The database is, is great. So it's got a lot of information, a lot of links in it. And the idea, future idea, is to link all of the deed research that we've done because the registry of deeds, if you've ever spent time there, it's a lengthy process. Once we have the deed and we've got all of the restrictions that apply to it, we PDF it and we just put it into this database as a link. So people down the road for years to come can just click on it and say, oh, well, that, they've already done the research. There's no reason to do it again. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody?
Yeah, I guess a couple of questions and a comment just in terms of the filtering process. You know, one of the stated goals of the Housing Production Plan is to prioritize redevelopment. And so I'm curious about an analysis process for developed properties that might be appropriate for redevelopment. And then kind of associated with that, I'm curious, I know the, the schools ended up in the poor category, but how they even got through that first filter, given that they are at least developed insofar as they have schools on that property?
Sure, yeah. So the first part of your question is an excellent one. We've essentially been, I shouldn't say relying on, but we've been encouraging redevelopment for affordable housing in the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, mainly because that's in the downtown. It's on a transit route. It's walkable. It's bikeable. There's all those great characteristics. There's town infrastructure, sewer and water and whatnot. So we've been really trying to encourage that type of redevelopment. There is an effort to look through the database for redevelopment properties. There's not a whole lot. There's actually a lot of vacant properties. But the schools are one of those potential options. We just haven't been able to reach out to the school department and to try and figure out their future plans yet. So that's why they're in the poor candidate categories. So we wouldn't want to be going, recommending something without, you know, doing our research.
Mr. Muscally? Yeah. Jed, thank you for a wonderful presentation and all the work that you and your staff put, put forward. I guess that my question is directed to the town manager because you're recommending the disposition of, of, of three parcels, I think, or?
There's four parcels.
Well, four, but they, two of them were, one of them was doubled up, I think. But I guess the question is, why these two? And why only these two going forward? But what was your, you know? And when might we think about the other?
Let me see more. Yeah. So, so as Jed indicated, and tremendous amount of work he put into this and his staff. We had a, we had a department head meeting. We looked at each and it was, it was my direction that we look at those parcels that we felt were, were best suited for immediate development. We're going to come back and reanalyze again and look at releasing some of these additional parcels. But the, two parcels, but actually four, as you look at them on the map that Jed had shown, on West Falmouth Highway and the Locust, Locust Field Road parcels, we felt like those were low-hanging fruit, so to speak, and immediately ready to go for development. So we recommended those moving forward for this November town meeting, Warren. It'll be part of the, part of the discussion we have later this evening.
Any else?
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that you're prioritizing the potential development of affordable housing, but I would love to see the rest of the list so that we can think about also some of these lots that are not buildable. And I'd love to continue the discussion on community garden opportunities. So I know that's not the priority, but I'd like to keep it on the radar.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go, before we go any further, by show of hands, if, given the opportunity... Before we get, before we go any further, by show of hands, if, given the opportunity, speak about articles as they come up tonight. Who would be interested in speaking? Okay, if we limited it to three minutes a person, would that satisfy everyone? How's the board feel about that?
Good ideas.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Town manager?
Yes, sir.
That make everybody happy? Troy, that make you happy?
Happy.
All right.
I was going to mention Troy.
All right.
Three minutes is not enough time, but...
So that's what we'll do going forward. So nobody leave. So as the article comes up, I just don't want to turn this into a Donnybrook and debate this with boxing gloves on, because that's not what we're here to do.
Chair, are you taking public comment on Jed's presentation? If so, I'd like to just make a couple of quick comments.
I'll give you two minutes.
For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, the Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Trust. And first and foremost, would like to thank Jed and all the staff for all this really great work. It's been a long time coming, for sure. My comments are directed to the 300 properties under two acres. And I know that there's talk about starting that analysis. But when we look at the goals of sustainable development is infill development and taking what I expect are many of these lots that are tax-taking lots in existing subdivisions and throwing them overboard to put out there for RFP. Because it's important to keep in mind that with these larger parcels, it's fine, but they're very expensive to develop. They take a long time to permit. You've got water infrastructure, subdivision, road infrastructure, other utilities. When you have building lots or lots that are, you know, in, in keeping with the size of existing neighborhoods, those lots can be built on within a year. And they, the cost of building on those lots is reduced because they can connect to existing water and utilities within the subdivision already. So my request would be, as we move forward, instead of taking all 300 lots and looking at all 300, pick out the ones that are in existing residential subdivisions that represent infill development and identify those right away for disposition. And my theory is that if you're the captain of a sinking ship and you have 300 life jackets, you don't look at all the life jackets on the deck to decide which ones you're going to throw overboard. You pick the best and you save the drowning. And we are in a crisis. So my request would be, I guess, to, to look at those 300 other parcels in terms of infill development. Look at them in terms of zoning requirements for what's in the neighborhood already, as opposed to trying to meet one acre lot sizes and frontage requirements. Our zoning bylaw allows non-conforming lots to be built on as small as 10,000 square feet with 20 feet of frontage. So we don't need to look at, you know, current lot size on those lots. So those are my comments. And again, very appreciative of the work that's been done to date. But I think there's a second phase here where we can get some of these, especially tax-taking lots that are in existing subdivisions, put out very quickly and have houses on them very quickly.
Thank you.
Can I just comment briefly? Also, in the new housing bill, there's provisions for those smaller lots to be now buildable. I don't know how that really applies, but it's new, so we may have to look into that, too.
Thank you. Town manager, consider the approval of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Moynihan is here tonight and I'm going to, as she's working her way to the podium, I would just want to give a brief overview summary. The Housing Trust is collaborating, as you all probably know, with 300 Committee Land Trust and Massachusetts Department of Recreation on the project. The site comprises about 3.8 acres. Lot one and two were created through an approval-not-required process, which was endorsed by the Planning Board on April 23rd of this year. Lot one is approximately 1.1 acres, on which the Housing Trust plans to construct five single-family homes for homeownership. Of those five homes, two will be restricted at 80% of the area median income, one home restricted at 100% of the AMI, and the remaining two homes restricted at 120% of the AMI. There will be two three-bedroom units and three two-bedroom homes on the, on the lot. The remaining lot two, the remaining portion of the parcel, will remain open space. And again, the summary background information is on May 20th of this year, Select Board as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund approved a grant to the Falmouth Housing Trust for the acquisition portion of 419 Wacoit Highway in an amount of $100,000. The Housing Trust filed an application for funding in the amount of $650,000 for construction phase of the project of those five affordable deed-restricted single-family homes, which equates to $130,000 per home. On July 31st of this year, the applicant met with the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group, which gave a positive recommendation to me to move it forward. While they're not recommending it be a condition, Mr. Chair and Select Board, the Working Group does strongly encourage the Housing Trust to design the door widths of the first floor of all the units, such that they're sufficient width, that they're reasonable, that they're accessible to an individual in a wheelchair. And the second recommended condition is the design of the bathroom on the first floor of all the units, such that they're accessible to a person in a wheelchair. On August 7th of this year, I sent a memo to the Community Preservation Committee recommending approval of the application in the amount requested. And on August 22nd of this year, the applicant went before the Community Preservation Committee, which gave a positive recommendation to the Select Board. And a copy of that memo from the Community Preservation Committee is included in your packet. And Mr. Chair, Select Board, it's going to be my recommendation that the Select Board approve the request. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Moynihan for her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw, and Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, Laura Moynihan with the Falmouth Housing Trust. I'd like to thank First Kim Fish and the Working Group for all their efforts on, on these funding applications. It's a lot of work and we do appreciate it. This project, we did acquire this land in June with the assistance of the Affordable Housing Fund. We are asking for $650,000 now for construction. With the land acquisition already awarded of $100,000 between the two, that would equal $150,000 per unit. We hope to file our application with the zoning board this week for the congruence of permit. We're hoping that we'll have that issued by the end of the year and be able to start construction in early of 2025. All the engineering's been completed. This is a $2.8 million project. We do have a fundraising budget of about $500,000. Our application filed with you states that fundraising budget at about $420,000. But recently, the Falmouth Housing Trust Board voted to commit to adding advanced treatment septic systems for each parcel, and that's going to add about $90,000 to $100,000 in additional costs. So the project will address the, a number of the funding criteria of the fund. And most importantly, it will address the range of income levels at 80% area median income to 120% area median income. So our breakdown is that two units will be resold or sold at 80% area median income, one unit at 100% area median income, and two units at 120% area median income. So we are essentially looking at the 88, $90,000 to $150,000 dollar annual, you know, gross income per household. Essentially work, workforce housing is what we're looking to do. So this is the site plan. It's, there's a copy in your package. And what we've tried to do with the design here is to complement the village setting in Wacoit. Over in this area here is the existing vet clinic. So, which is up in this location, and you have various commercial uses across the street. So we're looking to just expand that village setting off of Wacoit, Wacoit Highway and then bring an additional house in the back of the property here. We have the two-bedroom plans are again in your packet. These are just some rendering, so it's more of a narrow house. The bedrooms would be upstairs and bathroom and living area on the first floor. We have been seeing an increased demand for two-bedroom units. So that is why this project addresses three two-bedroom units. And then the three-bedroom plan is the same, similar plan to what we have built on Sam Turner Road. Most recently, four houses there. So this is a typical Cape Cod style with one bedroom on the first floor and two bedrooms on the second floor and two full baths. So that is my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Muscally?
Just, just a question, Ms. Moynihan. The, the income ranges you gave were assume what, an 80% mortgage that someone would be able to obtain?
Yes.
Is there any assistance for the down payment? I guess in each, you know, 20%, or something along those lines?
There, it depends on the more, the mortgage loan program that the buyer is applying for or qualifying for. But the mortgage lenders locally, they're very good at working with the buyers to secure what are sometimes called soft seconds through mass housing or other agencies. So the financing package is put together by those lenders who are experienced with affordable housing to, to provide that kind of assistance. But all buyers need to have at least 3% cash down, which is a state requirement.
Clarifying question, that's the income deed restrictions for, for sale. Does that carry through to subsequent sale?
Yes, they are resale restrictions in perpetuity. So a home that's a, is sold initially at a three-bedroom home, that's sold at 120% area median income, that sale price might be $390,000 for that home initially. If that buyer 10 years later tries, goes to sell it, then there would be a multiplier added to that price. So there might be a slight increase, but the price would stay, you know, relatively the same, maybe a little bit more. But typically, any increase in the market value of the home is not captured by the seller. So it stays restricted in perpetuity.
So it's restricted to the, you said with multiplier, to the current, essentially a rate related to, to the current AMI, or would be the, the AMI at the time of resale?
At the time of resale times the multiplier that the state sets in the deed restriction. So typically, capital improvements are usually returned to a buyer. But there's not a lot of equity or market increase that's returned to a seller on resale. So that affordability or attainability of it is preserved.
Anybody else speak to this? No?
I don't have any questions, but I would comment that, given the applicant's willingness to do the de-nitrifying septic system and all of the units are affordable, I would say it's justified that we're at the top of our funding range. If there's any comments, I would move approval, but we'll wait and see.
Anybody? No? Okay.
I would move approval of the funding. Is there a written mail?
There is. It reads, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, motion to grant $650,000 to Falmouth Housing Trust for the construction of five deed-restricted homes for homeownership on land located at 419 Wacoit Highway, and authorize the town manager to execute the documentation, sending forth the terms of the financial award to the Falmouth Housing Trust.
I'd say that's my motion as ordered by Mr. Renshaw.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Consider the approval of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application, Scranton and Maine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quickly, as I see Ms. Linda Clark is here also, I want to just preface her comments, if I may. In 2021, the Falmouth Housing Corporation and Affirmative Investments, collectively known as the Scranton Maine LLC, were awarded $2 million for the 48-unit age-restricted affordable housing project, which, as you all know, is located on Scranton Avenue and Main Street. In 2022, after the massive increase of construction costs that we all saw due to the pandemic, they requested and were granted $2.5 million for a total aggregate amount of $4 million. At the time, Scranton Maine LLC also had a grant application to Cape Light Compact that was pending. They were unsure of if or when, or how much money they would be granted. Once they received approval from Cape Light Compact, Scranton Maine LLC was able to reduce the award amount from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund by over $1 million, $1,015,000, therefore reducing the total aggregate amount of the award to $3.785 million. On July 22nd of this year, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund received an amended letter of intent and an amended application requesting $216,305 for several unseen expenses, and as examples, and all of these are included in your packet, shower doors, overflow parking, and the expenses associated with the retaining wall. The Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group gave a favorable, favorable recommendation. And on July 25th of this year, I issued a memo to the Community Preservation Committee recommending approval of the amended application and the corporation's request. On August 22nd, the applicant went before the Community Preservation Committee, which again gave a positive recommendation to the Select Board. And that'll turn it over to Ms. Clark.
Anything to add to that, Linda?
I don't. That, that's it in a nutshell. We had a few setbacks as far as we discovered with the showers. The state accepts shower enclosures with no door and a shower curtain. And you have a lip this high, like water's going to come out on the floor. It's a slip hazard. Water from floor to floor. And we discovered this later on in the project. So it was best course of action for safety and, and just to maintain the building for the shower enclosures, the glass enclosures. We ran into an elevation change that just came out of nowhere. We had to build a stone wall in order to receive a fence at the property line. And then we're discovering that seniors are driving longer. So we decided it was a good idea, I decided it was a good idea, to add eight additional parking spots. We had a parking reduction initially through the 40B permit, although just applications and applicants coming in and speaking with them, most of them are driving. We have 92, 95-year-olds that are still driving. So that was in the best interest of the project to make sure we have adequate parking right from occupancy. So these are the few snags we ran into requesting the $216,000 back from the $1,015 we gave back to the fund.
Any board questions?
I'd just comment, good job of getting the doors for $500. That's pretty good shopping.
Mr. Muscally?
Just a question, how many parking spaces were you originally given?
We looked at our other senior project, Schoolhouse Green, and it's, it's basically not even a parking spot per unit because it's senior. So we kind of went with the same format. We now have 46 spots for 48 units. So we're well-covered in that area.
46, including the eight, or 46 plus eight more?
Plus eight more.
So it'd be 54. When, when you say you have 46...
We have 46 total, I'm sorry, deducting the eight.
So, so does the eight, is the eight on top of the 46?
The 46 is a total number.
Okay, so you have 38, basically.
Correct.
And now you're asking for another eight.
I don't think it's adequate. I just thought to start off a project, it would be an issue.
Any public?
I would say that, you know, they've been good partners to go out and find additional funding, to give back money to the town. And so we should be good partners and fund these additional needs to get the project finished.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this. Is there another written motion here? Let's see.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, motion to grant $216,305 to Scranton Maine LLC for unexpected expenses as outlined in the amended letter of intent dated July 22nd, 2024, and authorize the town manager to execute the documentation, sending forth the terms of the financial award to Scranton Maine LLC.
And I would make that motion as, as explained by Mr. Renshaw. And also, I really appreciate the detailed explanation of what the money was needed for. That was well done.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. No further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you very much.
Next up, consider a vote on Eversource Martha Vineyard, Martha's Vineyard Cabling Project and revised project schedule presented on August 12th, 2024. Mr. McConity?
Good evening, Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. The agenda item here tonight is a recap of a presentation that was given by Eversource on August 12th. We have with me tonight, we also have representatives from Eversource. If there's any questions on the project or questions on the communication, that's been... on the project or questions on the communication that's been going on so far or in the future. Before I talk this, the agenda item is for a revision to request to change the work hours. But before I get into that, just a recap of the project and where they were. The project is multi-segmental, so they've already completed the infrastructure on Jones Road and on Mill Road. The infrastructure's been completed, it's been paved, it's done. The next project they're working on now is Surf Drive. With this Surf Drive project, they're going to be directionally drilling from the island cables in the Surf Drive parking lot and in the Mill Road parking lot. And in order for them to be able to stay on their schedule to have the project completed, they're requesting a time schedule between January and May of seven-day operations. With that, an MOU that was signed by the town and by Eversource back in 2021 does have language in there that does allow Eversource with proper approval with the town to consider seven-day operations. So they will be looking to do that. Seven-day operations means the project will be running seven days, lights, generators, you know, pumps, what they need to do, but the actual work hours will be 12 hours a day. They're asking seven days operation, 12 hours a day. With that, there will be sound curtains at both sites to relieve the noise from generators that'll be running and also light curtains, so there will be no light coming across the parking lot in that project. So that's what we're requesting to tonight is a change of work hours for those two projects in the Surf Drive parking lot and in the Mill Road parking lot.
What questions? Mr. Scally?
Yeah, but when when does the town or when do you expect to get the construction drawings with respect to this project before anything really can go forward?
We're working on the bike path drawings. That's what we're working, so that's another segment that's going to be coming up next. And Eversource will be coming in front of the select board again before that starts, that project starts. Those drawings we'll be looking at because there's widening of the bike path and there's additional widening of the bike path, but also going to be some bump outs that they can put benches in or whatever. The goal, not to spend too much time on the bike path, but the goal was always that the no vaults and no manholes in the bike path because they get slippery and they settle. And in the future, we just didn't want any more settlements. So off the road and being able to do that, they haven't been they haven't been bump outs. So we're expecting those plans. We have been in conversations with Eversource. We want the plans for the bike path and then be able to move forward. This, looking to start the bike path a month in the middle of October.
Pretty quick.
It's pretty quick, so we're going to need, they're going to need to be able to provide us the plan so we can turn it around. But this is, I'll consider the bike path section from Depot Ave to Te Hune, the fourth phase. They've finished phase one, they've finished phase two, they're in phase, well, actually the fifth phase. They've finished phase one, phase two, they're going to do Surf Drive, and then they're going to do the directional drilling will be phase four and then the bike path. But yeah, I will say this, as the Director of Public Works, I don't need the headaches either. So I don't want any of the work that's being done on the bike path. I want to make sure that everyone's on the same page and everyone knows what's going on on the bike path.
And I ask that question because I was under the impression, as was the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, that as a result of the meeting we had last week, that this matter was not going to be on tonight. So I just wanted to ask for clarification with respect to the when we might expect those construction drawings and maybe Mr. Burt is prepared to give us an idea when?
Yep.
If you don't mind.
Phil can speak to that. I will say that Public Works, Eversource, we've been working with the town, we've been working with the Bike Waste Committee. We've had several meetings to talk about what we're going to do on the Bike Waste Committee. So there is open communication and we're taking their recommendations and their requests. But yeah, a full set of plans will need to be reviewed before from the town.
It's been a wonderful process and appreciate all the collaboration and cooperation from Eversource as well.
Good evening, Philip Burt, Community Relations, Eversource, back before the board. To address the question, so yeah, there's two separate sets of plans. You're referencing the bike path plans, so the Surf Drive plans are complete, the town has those. We've had to go back with our engineers. So we went out and walked the path with both the town's tree warden with DPW several times and basically identified different locations where we were going to essentially move this line. And so the duct bank is going to run down the bike path. The original plans had, I think, about 100 and something trees that were going to have to be taken out as part of that process. We felt like that was excessive. We knew that there was a desire on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee's side to get rid of black locusts, but to generally keep the canopy as best we could. So we walked the site again with our arborist, with the town's arborist, and tried to reshape the way the thing went. So it required redrawing the plans. So that's the delay on the plans. I spoke with our project manager this morning about those, and he reached out to our engineering company this afternoon and expects them, like I said in the meeting last week, like at any point this time, they're just wrapping them up, the last few pieces. But in general, I just want to thank the town, thank the residents for ongoing support of the project. You know, I recognize it's not easy to deal with these kind of things going on in your community and appreciate the partnership, so.
Doug?
No, it's a different subject.
Okay. Is it accurate? I heard that the, from one of the bicycle committee members, that there was one manhole that was not able to be located outside of the main road of the path?
Yeah, so we, yes. And we're going to come back, actually, and give a full presentation on the bike path, but I'm happy to talk about it now. So we talked to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee about this, and so one of those one of those units, Eversource is going to essentially take control of that. We're going to be paving over it, so essentially it won't be there. It'll be buried underneath the path. There was, there's one location where we just couldn't fit it, physically couldn't fit it there. So it's going to be underneath the path, it'll get paved over.
If you ever need to, you'll emergency access it.
Right. And so what we've got in place is a MOU that's being developed that will maintain that for like 20 years or unless the town ever has to get in there and do separate work on that location. But yeah, essentially, it's it's going to be just one that we can't access for the most part.
And then I had one about the directional drilling. So, you know, when we talked in August, I asked you if you should consider starting earlier so that you don't run up against scheduling conflict. You seemed confident at the time that there was plenty of time and not to worry, but now we're talking about the Sunday operation. I'm kind of concerned that, I'm not sure that's a good idea, and I'm wondering if maybe we can get the project started a little earlier, see how it goes for the first couple of weeks, and if you start to run into trouble, maybe then we can award the Sunday? I just don't like the idea of arbitrarily just saying, because it's going to be really loud. It's going to be very disruptive to people. I think they need at least one day of peace.
Right. So the trouble with with us adjusting in that sense is at the same time that this is going on, on the Martha's Vineyard side, we're also doing it. And so in order for us to have this project wrapped up by the late spring, early summer of 2025, we have to start over there and then start over here. We don't have, we don't have drills that we can go on both sides. We've got to do over there, then we're going to do over here. So in order to meet that timeline, that's to be out of there by end of May, that's what is factored into that, is that seven days. It'd be pretty challenging. I think what would end up happening is either we would still be there come the summer, which is not a viable option for anybody, or we'd have to come back at a later date, which again is super challenging because that entire area would have to be restored, brought back to normal, and the cost would be in the tens of millions of dollars to essentially for both for the reconstruction of that area, but also just to bring that vendor back. Because once they leave, they're essentially on to another project. So it becomes a super challenging thing to make that happen.
You're less optimistic than you were in August?
No, I think I think when I was, when I was here in August, the reference was still for seven days. It was optimistic that we can be out of there by that timeframe. It's not, it's that without that seven days, then it becomes a definite, it becomes an issue.
Oh, I see you mistakenly thought it was seven days already agreed.
No, no, that was what the presentation was regarding, was the need for that.
Oh, I guess I missed that then. Okay.
Heather?
Yeah, can you just reiterate? Because in that last presentation, you said seven-day operations with the mitigation technically through May, but you were confident that you could be out by April, right? Is that still what you're you're saying, but the technical end date is still end of May?
Yes, because, so one of the things that's built into our contracts with our vendors is like, is risk analysis, right? So there are certain, if we have a winter that's consecutive day, multiple nor'easters, southeasters, whatever you want to call them, you know, where you're getting battered by weather, there are conditions where we can't be out there. So the timeframe is really a shorter amount of time that we actually need. What's built into that contract, though, with our vendor is risk. So it's extended out into May and June to account for the possibility of there being whatever delays might show up, whether that be weather-related, whether it be equipment failure, whatever that might be, to account for that, that's the later timeframe. But I think our project manager was here and I think he was indicating something like that, beginning of April or late March, I think he might have even said when he was here last last time.
Following up on on both comments, you know, I get the light curtain and how that's going to be effective, but how confident are you, and Peter, this is directed to you as well, how confident are you that these sound barriers or sound curtains are going to really be able to, you know, filter out the noise for people, especially like Doug said, on a Sunday?
It's, what I can say, it's a standard construction practice. When directional, when that happens with directional drilling, that's typical construction practices, they put up these 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 sound curtains. Is it going to be 100%? Probably not. I mean, you're going to be able to hear it, but it's going to, it will reduce the sound barrier. They're like 12 feet tall and they go up, when they go up. I do want to make a comment. I know that Phil mentioned May and June. It's May. The parking lot is, opens for the beach at the end of May. The parking lot's going to be open in in May. But so what I will say, and I said that I was at the Finance Committee meeting last week and we had talked about this project, is that Eversource does realize that it's a big inconvenience for the town doing this work. So to help the town and to help Public Works, the water line, they're replacing the water main, and that water main is 120, 20 years old down along from Shore Street down to Mill Road. And in addition, that we're going to connect the sidewalk to between Walker and Shore Street, and we're going to take care of the drainage down there. That's going to be a big issue because we have a lot of flooding in that area right now that we, it's very challenging for us to be able to do that. So with working with Eversource and Eversource's contractor, they're going to be able to do the work. We provided them the design and the plans.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I appreciate that extra work and incentive, but but even hearing the words May and June, for that matter even end of May, for both parking lots for one of our signature beaches is extremely concerning. And I'm wondering what, frankly, what's what's the plan B, the backup plan, if things, if we do have a rough winter and things aren't going well because into June isn't viable? Should we be instead looking at doing one parking lot this spring and one next fall? Should, yeah. It feels like we need some some alternatives or a plan B to?
Yeah, I'll leave that up to Eversource for their construction sweet considers and the way they'll work that. But I will say that that parking lot, both parking lots have to be open in May for the beaches. So it will be mid-May completed, cleaned up. So if they, if it turns out they do one parking lot and another parking lot, that's their means and methods, but.
How do we guarantee that?
I, so what they're requesting is approval from the board to say, and there is verbiage in the MOU that they can work seven days with 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 approval. We give them approval January, possible, January 1, and they need to be done beginning of May, second week in May. They need to be, they need to be cleaned up and out of there. Set dates.
Is there any possibility of doing the Falmouth side first?
So I don't believe there is. Based on on the vineyard side, there are specific environmental regulations that we're up against on two of the parcels that, well, especially one of the parcels that we're at. So we are, we are required to start earlier there. There's only one vendor that's.
Could I ask please what those are?
That's. I honestly.
Trying to be accommodating, this whole thing is just to help the vineyard. Maybe there could be some kind of consideration for that because.
Yeah, I honestly, I mean, our environmental folks could definitely speak to what the permitting issues are. I don't.
I'm going to go to Barbara's. Wearing her arm out over there. Come on, Barbara.
Barbara Schneider with my beach chair hat on. So I'm sitting here, and you probably could hear the scream coming out of me, because when I heard end of May, and I know what goes on from the middle of April on at the Surf Drive bath house and the parking lot, I, my first question is, are both of these parking lots going to be worked on at the same time? Can you answer that?
Yes.
So there's no way to make sure that the Surf Drive parking lot is done in April?
So, I mean, honestly, I don't want to speak to the engineering of it because I just, I don't know the those those specifics about the contractor could probably, our project manager could maybe speak to those like engineering questions with respect to timing and things like that. All I do know is that there's an extensive period of risks that's built into the contract to account for all of these unknowns. So, and the idea of, so, and I think one other thing to keep in mind is like, you know, the ask was to avoid coming, because like our MOU with the town already has language built into it that says we could go around the clock with agreement from the town, for example. We don't want to do that. Like, that's not, like, we could potentially go that route if we wanted to have that discussion about us doing that to avoid an April issue. But I think our assumption was no one was going to want 24 hours a day or anything like that, so. I don't want to speak to the engineering of it, but like, I can't.
I think that when I just heard May brought into this equation, that's the first time that we've ever been hearing that and thinking that we could be in trouble with using the bath house and that parking lot in, at the time when we have the longest lines and the most people going in and out of there. I'm concerned, I'm just bringing that up. I understand that we're trying to be good neighbors. At the same time, I'm, I'm asking the same as you did, why can't we start two months earlier and make sure that we're not running into our season? And at the same time that this is going on, I will add, we're also going to be facing the Minot Beach situation. So you're going to have a double whammy on both ends of that shoreline that are going to cause angst, and you'll be hearing from me all the time next summer. So thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Peter?
I'll put out an option out there. I, I, I work for the town. My duty is to protect the town and protect the residents. Put an option, put a date out there. And maybe the option to Eversource is you can do, you can do your seven days a week, and they start in December and they're out by April. There may be a time if they need to do 24 hours, they may need to do 24 hours a time if you want to get them out of there in in May. That's the hard part because you're going miles across, you're pulling cables from the from the island over. Time limits.
Who would make the determination whether they could go to 24 hours or is it just?
I think we've really already done that.
They have that right as as it is?
They need, they need approval to do that. So they're asking for seven-day operation?
Right.
It's, it'll be seven-day operation, but they were doing 12 hours a day. If they, I don't want to be speaking for Eversource because they're going to have to go back, but if there comes a time that they have to be out by the end of April, there might be a 24-hour at some point in time. Maybe they can front-load it, do some 24 hours in January and February before it gets crowded down there and it's not so busy down there. But it'll get them out of the beach, they'll be cleaned up, the parking lots will be cleaned up, they'll be repaved and be and be ready.
Anything else? No? Anything else from the public? Would you like to proceed?
Well, I can see now that, I guess, the seven day is pretty important. I was a little hopeful that we could get rid of the Sunday activity. I was a little hopeful that we could get rid of the Sunday activities, but I don't think that's really realistic.
Have you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm thinking about the date restrictions.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
We've been having a little bit of a sidebar with Town Council. So it would be my recommendation that, there's a section in the current MOU, MOA, that, under work hours, that provides an opportunity for Eversource to approach the Select Board and make this request. According to Town Council, we could draft a separate, like an amendment to the agreement more. I don't want to use the wrong words.
I have to look... I have not reviewed the agreement, so I'd like to, an opportunity to look at it. But if, what I understand is that we're being asked to alter this agreement in the first place, then it's an opportunity to have a conversation, to add terms. Without, you know, without having reviewed the agreement, I can't say, I can't really say with any specificity what we could add.
Let me help you out with that. Then with that explanation, we need to table this and get that information and get reassurances from the company to make a decision if you want to make an amendment to it. If she's unsure, Mike, then we need to...
I think it's important that we have that time, because in order to place those dates, specific dates in the agreement and have assurances that the site will be clean and the parking lots will be available for the beach season, I think it's important that we document that, memorialize it in an agreement.
Yeah, I would like to hear, you know, from Eversource. I understand. And also, I'm interested to know what the restrictions are over at Martha's Vineyard that are so insurmountable that we seem to have to take second fiddle to. So I'd like to hear that as well at the next presentation. Peter?
I was just going to say, it's actually not an amendment to the MOU. It, there's verbiage in the MOU that says they can do that with permission from the town.
I think we'd all feel more comfortable, though, if Maura looked at it as our town attorney, and we knew what we were signing off on specifically.
And it would be also great to hear the engineering reasoning of why we can't adjust the schedule, if possible.
You good?
But we're in the spirit of cooperation.
So we'll look to come back, we'll look to come back to, at a future date.
I'm sure we'll work it out.
Thank you. Good solution. Do you have a presentation?
Yes. If it's okay, I'll do it from the... So, Mr. Chair, we're here tonight asking for the Board's approval to authorize the town manager to execute a request for proposals to lease the Falmouth Country Club.
All right.
So, just to sort of set the table here, this is, for those who are not already enjoying the town golf course, the town-owned Falmouth Country Club is located off of 630 Carriage Shop Road, comprised of four parcels shown here. The property was acquired in 2005, and it was acquired with the intent that the town continue to operate it as a golf course through a public-private partnership. It has operated generally, I would say, successfully since that time with that arrangement. The first lease came to an end in 2014, and a second competitive request for proposals was issued, resulting in the incumbent firm, who was awarded the first lease, again getting the second lease. And I would note at that time that the town received only the one proposal in response to that advertised request for proposals. And I think that speaks to the challenges that the golf industry was facing regionally and nationally at that time, and I'll say a little bit more about that later. So the current lease expires at the end of this calendar year. And just as context for the town's financial consideration relative to the course, the debt for the purchase of the property is $650,000 per year, and that was a 30-year bond, so it actually runs through 2035. So there are many stakeholders. There are several public policy interests at play with issuing a request for proposals and setting goals for this process. I would summarize by saying that the goal of the RFP is to attract a quality firm able to effectively manage all aspects of the golf business to ensure the long-term success of the Falmouth Country Club. We want golf, one of the goals, is the town's fiduciary financial goal to, which is to have the revenue generated by the golf course cover all of the town's costs, meaning all of the debt, any capital expenditures overhead. That was, that goal has not been achieved for most of the lease to date. It has been achieved the past three years, going on four. With the pandemic and a big spike in interest in golf, the rounds and the revenues went up. And in recent years, the Falmouth Country Club has generated sufficient revenue for the town, for the town's rent, to pay for the debt and to pay for the capital that we're investing and any overhead. And, you know, we certainly want to see that continue. So, in looking for, again, the goals, we want a stable, long-term relationship that is mutually beneficial for the operator and the town. And I say that we want it to be beneficial for the operator, because if it's not, then, you know, they're going to go bankrupt, they're going to default, and the town's going to be, you know, having to pick up the pieces and then find another operator. So that's, there's a balance, right? We want to, we want to get a good return on our asset, but we don't want to squeeze, we don't want to try to squeeze so much that the private operator's not successful and we end up having to, you know, disrupt the town, go through a whole RFP process again. That's, you know, that's not in anyone's best interest. And then, of course, you know, the reason that the town acquired the land, probably multiple, I wasn't here for that debate and discussion. I imagine one reason might have been to prevent development for housing, but also, and in all of the environmental impacts that go along with that, but also to maintain a golf course that Falmouth residents can enjoy, that attracts visitors and therefore has ancillary economic benefits for local businesses. So that, too, maintaining a good quality course and those benefits are also part and parcel of the goals for the lease. What we are recommending is a 25-year lease with a five-year renewal term, and that's a much longer term than the prior leases, which were five years with five-year renewals. One of the reasons for that is because we have had such a successful relationship with one operator. It just, not that we're necessarily going to have that same operator again through this competitive process, but it shows that it is possible to have a capable, quality operator and maintain a long-term relationship. But really, the driving reason to recommend such a long-term lease is that, one of the challenges of managing a golf course is the, you know, you have this balance between, the golfers want a great experience, the visitors want a great experience, the town wants to maintain its assets, but the town also wants to recover its costs. And the revenues are dynamic, and they're, it's not possible to predict with any certainty over a long period of time what those revenues are going to look like. So, one of the concepts of the 25-year lease is the, in my view, the entity that's probably best able to determine what capital investments will have a return on investment is the private operator. But a private operator can't do that on a five-year time horizon, right? A lot of these capital improvements have a useful life of 20 years, and so they need to depreciate that investment over a longer period of time. So in putting together the terms for the RFP and the lease that are before you, what we are attempting to do is to, you know, to find that sweet spot where the town is prioritizing covering the debt initially and requiring the private operator to make some level investment of investment in capital improvements, but not to dictate in too much detail what those improvements are and what exactly the value of those will be, because depending on what the future revenues are, those plans may need to adjust. So we want to maintain some flexibility. If the, if golf, if the golf course continues to be as successful as it has been in the last several years, the town will receive substantial surplus revenues that can be reinvested in capital improvements that the private operator may not be able to do or interested in doing on its own. So we're not committing to doing that, but we're structuring the financial elements in such a way that if all goes well, there will be significant capital improvements that the town can choose to participate in without an obligation under the lease terms. So, in the request for proposals and the lease, we have set out some minimum requirements to filter out firms that are not going to be capable of delivering, of properly managing the course. So the basic one is five years of experience in managing all aspects of the golf operation, and that includes marketing, customer service, course maintenance, pro-shop, food and beverage. And I emphasize "all aspects" because there are a lot of different models out there for golf course, public-private partnership, where sometimes the town does some portions itself. You know, sometimes the town does the customer service and the business end, and they hire someone out just to do the maintenance, or vice versa. Sometimes the town, such as Sandwich, does most of the operation in-house, but contracts out food and beverage only. We want to make sure we have only private operators who have experience with all of these. And we want to, and another one of the minimum requirements is that they've done that at at least two separate facilities. We've established a minimum requirement for capital improvement experience, including a project that disrupts play, because that's part of what you need to do at a golf course for certain improvements, is you're going to have to shut down play on one or more holes at a time, and managing that is complicated, and experience is really helpful there. And then we have established a minimum requirements for key staff members, and they're really, there are two key staff members. One is the golf course superintendent on the agronomic maintenance side, and the other is the business manager on the business customer service side. We have taken a lot of time to develop the selection criteria, drawing on the town's past request for proposals and some others from other municipalities. So among the selection, well, actually, I've identified all the selection criteria here. I won't read them all out, but I'll perhaps just highlight some of them. A positive work history, one of the RFPs that we looked at had a nice provision where, in the RFP, for all of these selection categories, we've defined the criteria under each category. What does highly advantageous mean? Advantageous, not advantageous, and unacceptable. So in the case of maintaining a positive work history, we have identified 50% as the minimum requirement. So if they have, you know, five past relationships or 18 past relationships, they have to be able to demonstrate with references at least 50% positive, and then the selection criteria go up from there. We have included, in the selection criteria, a resident discount and set a minimum at 10%. That's one of those areas where, you know, we'd love to be able to guarantee residents a higher discount. And if we knew that the financial experience of the past year was going to continue for the next 25 years, we could do that, but we don't, right? So there have been, there have been years when every course on the Cape has been underwater. So we need to leave the private operator some flexibility on terms that are going to limit their potential revenue. I'm now on to the second page of selection criteria. Similar to the residency discount, there's a twilight rate selection criteria, so that's, it's a discount offered later in the day. We've not required it as a minimum, but we've included it as a selection criteria. We want to know what their marketing expertise looks like, so they will be submitting and hopefully demonstrating their ability to use data and technology to be really sophisticated in the marketing, to get the, you know, to maximize the revenue potential of the asset. We have some financial criteria in there. These are private, at least a couple of the potential interesting parties, or private operators, I should say, are privately owned. So they won't have a bond rating, but we can get some insight into their financial wherewithal through a Dunn &amp; Bradstreet report. And then we have a couple of environmental goals included among the selection criteria. So for the financial terms, we, again, we're trying to hit that sweet spot, so we've increased the base rent from what is now $400,000 to $500,000. We have updated the lease to be in compliance with current interpretation of Massachusetts property tax law. So they, the private operator will be obligated to pay full real estate and personal property taxes, so that represents an increase in their cost compared to the current lease. We are proposing to reduce, to have a minimum revenue share of 40%. The current, the current revenue share is 50%. That was what was bid by the current operator. And we have added something that was not included in the current lease, which is a minimum capital investment of $2 million over the course of the lease term. So this chart shows the Falmouth Country Club course revenue in yellow, and you can see that the golf revenues were totally flat from 2016, 2006, excuse me, to 2019, and then they spiked up in, from 2020 to 2024. It's just been exceptionally strong. Again, we'd love to see that continue, but we saw a similar sort of pattern with the Tiger Woods golf phenomenon, where nationally, golf interest and revenues went way up, and then they plateaued, and they stayed flat for a long period of time. So, again, we're just emphasizing here that we have to have some humility about our ability to predict what the future revenues are going to be, and understand that the potential bidders are going to be, you know, they know they're facing that risk of uncertain revenues, and they're going to be, their interest and their bids are going to be limited accordingly. So our review process in developing the drafts that are before you tonight, we started with the existing RFP and lease as a starting point. We reviewed samples from Bridgewater and Duxbury. We met a couple of times with the Golf Advisory Committee, got their input and public input. The Golf Advisory Committee did vote on August 19th to recommend the 25-year lease term plus five years. They also voted to recommend the selection criteria that are in front of you this evening. And we have worked closely with both Town Council and outside special counsel in drafting the request for proposals and the RFP. So our, the timeline that we're looking at is, from here, we're, you know, we're seeking the Select Board's authorization to authorize the town manager to issue the RFP. And then we would be looking very quickly to do a final review of the request for proposals and lease, with, you know, one more review by staff and by legal counsel, incorporating any input the Select Board may have this evening. And I do want to mention one thing, Select Board Brown brought up a really good point, which is that the golf course has been looked at as a potential location for groundwater discharge for wastewater treatment. Of course, we hope that the Outfall will be the one and only discharge site, but it'll be a while before we know whether that gets approved. My understanding is the Water Quality Management Committee has rated the Allen parcel and the Augusta parcel more highly than the golf course parcel. So it's, you know, it's probably not terribly likely that this will be needed, but we don't know. So what we're going to do is incorporate a provision that allows for the town to disrupt the golf course with construction of an out, of a discharge. But we're going to put some parameters around it, because the way that... But we're going to put some parameters around it, because the way that, that we could do that without completely taking nine holes offline for, you know, for an entire year would be to have a, to have the effluent, rather than a discharge bed, to have it stored in a tank or in a pond, and then used for irrigation purposes. So that's something that's very common nationally, very rare locally, but we do have an example of it in Yarmouth, where that's being done.
Questions? Peter, you done them, sorry?
So you have the timeline before you. It is, I guess I would just close by saying, I certainly wish that we could have given the board more time to look at this request for proposals, and Mr. Mascali has mentioned that, that he had wished that the board had more time to look at this, and I, you know, I can only agree with that, with all of the priorities that we're balancing, and I wish that we could have gotten this to you sooner. There is a, a concern that if we don't allow enough time for the proposal, the potential bidders to see the proposal, to bid on, to go through their analysis, to raise questions, get answers to those questions, that we could, you know, we could diminish the likelihood that we get multiple competitive bids on the project. So that's, that's the concern with delay.
The flip side of that argument, Peter, is that there is also a concern that, given the somewhat constrained timeframe that we do have, that that might not be such, so good to get other possible competitive bids in there, to take a look at the property, look at the books, and so forth, so that because it has, and listen, I commend you for getting this done, I commend the golf advisory committee for, you know, for their efforts, but as you said before, I think this should have happened well in advance of tonight's meeting. I'm prepared to vote no against this. I do have some, some major questions, one of which is the term of the lease, 25 years, you know, this is a policy decision that I think the select board needs to, needs to make. Appreciate that it was your recommendation, but leasing a piece of property for 25 years is a rather significant decision that the board needs to make. Now, I know town meeting authorized up to 25 or up to 30 years. Myself, I would have been more comfortable with a different timeframe, maybe 10, 10, and 10. I'm also concerned that there's no timeframe for when those capital improvements are going to be made by the operator until year 20. So theoretically, we could end up with a situation where they've operated for 18 years, walk away, and we never got the capital improvements that we expected to get. You know, these are, I mean, there's a lot to digest in this, in this document, and that's why, you know, I'm going to vote no against it tonight, and hopefully, we can have some, more of an opportunity to take, take a look at it a little bit more closely. But if you might, if I might just ask one or two questions where I see. At one place, it says the, the base rental is $500,000 inclusive of all revenue categories with a 2% annual escalator. But actually, it may not always go up 2%, because there's provisions in here that if the revenue isn't higher than it was the year before, the 2% doesn't kick in. Is that correct? I've read that someplace.
So the, the, the base rent is escalated by 2% per year?
But there is a provision in here. I mean, I can't find, but there is a provision in here that, that basically says that the 2% would not apply by at least 2% for the prior year as compared to the year before. In the event annual gross revenue does not increase by 2% for a given year, the base rent shall remain the same as the prior year. That's page 36, article 21. The other question I have about the, the threshold amount, in one, in one, one place I see that it's set at $1,420,000, and then somewhere else in some of the documents, it seemed to indicate that that threshold amount, you know, the $1,420,000, the gross revenue, is, is actually going to change. Now, is the, is it $1,420,000 for every year? Because there is, again, somewhere in the document, an indication that, that that changes, goes up 2% a year, I think.
So if, if I may, go back to your first, your first point. You, you are correct in, and I probably should make it clear in the RFP to match the, the lease, but it, you're right, we did, I put the escalator on the $500,000 after hearing the input from the golf advisory committee, but I wanted to protect the operator, because if they have one of these, you know, decade-long, no, no revenue growth situation, you know, we don't want to put them underwater by, by requiring them to continue to go up on the rent if, if their gross revenue doesn't go up.
Really, I'm, I'm not looking to nitpick certain points or point things out. I'm, I think I'm only saying that in, in connection with my, my concern that this is being done too quickly, without the board having enough sufficient opportunity to digest it all, and that's where I'm coming from. I am, feel strongly about the capital improvements and the fact that the operator doesn't have to do anything before year 20, and we could be faced with a situation where they never do it, and we never got the capital improvements that we bargained for.
Anybody else? Heather?
Yeah, I have a number of, of questions. I, I guess I'm a little confused about what the capital expenditure strategy is, because I've heard that the rent should cover, or the, the revenue coming to the town should cover the costs for the town to do it, and that there's a plan with excess revenue for the town to be investing, but then there's also a, a plan for the operator to be investing in capital expenditures. So just some, some clarification would be great there. And then second question is maybe a newbie question, but around the significance of declaring the property surplus in order to put it out for an RFP.
Sure. So take the second question first. Under the Mass Procurement Law, Chapter 30B, whenever the town seeks to lease property, a part of the process is they, they want, it requires a, a vote of the, of the select board to declare the property surplus, which then allows you to go ahead and lease it. So the idea, the, the point is sort of, are we sure that the town doesn't want to use this for some other purpose? So that's, that's what that vote is. It's to declare, declare it surplus, meaning it's available for disposition, in this case, disposition specifically for golf course. It's, kind of doesn't make sense in this context, because we're already using it as a golf course, but 30B requires that vote.
But if we vote it surplus, you're, you were saying that you think we could still, within the terms of the contract, be doing the irrigate, potentially if needed, could do irrigation with wastewater effluent, not as, even if it's a surplus property and that's a municipal use?
As long as, as long as we've carved out the right to do that in the lease.
Right.
And then to your second question, who's doing the capital? Is it the private operator, is it the town? And the answer is yes. It needs to be flexible. We, we want to invest, there are a lot of improvements that we want to make to the course. We want to improve the parking lot, we want to improve the cart paths, we want to replace, upgrade, or replace the irrigation system if it needs to be, if it needs to be done. There are bunker improvements. So how much of that can we afford to do? I don't know. It depends on what the revenues look like for the next 25 years. So what we are envisioning is a, a shared situation. The reason to, the reason we're recommending going for such a long term is because it doesn't, it would not make any sense for a private operator who knows they have a 25-year lease to not make any capital improvements, because they're the ones that are going to suffer from the loss of customers if they don't maintain the asset for 25 years, going on 30. But they, you know, they have risks, and, and the town has risks. So the, the thought here is, not knowing exactly what the revenues will be, you set a floor, right? You set a minimum rent floor, you set a minimum private operator capital investment floor, and if things go well, the, the private operator has more revenue to reinvest, and the town also, we will be putting the funds received, any funds in excess of the debt, would go into the golf revolving funds, they'll be segregated earmarked, so that we could consider using those funds to invest in capital improvements. So maybe we get to year 10, and we say, you know what? We really want to fix up the clubhouse, and we have a couple million dollars available to do that. Private operator, are you willing to, to share in the cost of doing that? That's, that's the approach that's being put forth.
Anybody else?
Just a, a question, and I apologize for not asking this earlier before the meeting, but when we bought this, it was early on in our wastewater planning, and part of the reason we were interested in the sale or the purchase was that it had that 33 acres of ancillary property that's off to the side, which we were thinking maybe would be a waste treatment facility or a discharge site. We didn't really know. We also briefly talked about discharging at the golf course itself, because we could use irrigation, we could also use injection. We've since really learned that injection is not really a smart idea, but anyway, it was one of the ideas we threw out. But isn't it true that the debt on the golf course also pays for that other 33 acres? I'm pretty sure that was all in the same purchase.
So there, there was one purchase, two funding sources, so the, the open space portion of the acquisition was paid for community, from community preservation funds.
Okay.
So when I talk about the $650,000, that's only the general fund portion, not the community preservation fund.
So it is the actual cost of maintaining that golf course? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public? Carrie?
That's for the other thing.
Good evening. I'm Kerry Murphy, I'm the chairman of the golf advisory committee. The golf advisory committee did approve this, there was one dissenter on some issues about capital programs and capital improvements and the rate and where you, and Bob has brought this up. You know, the capital improvement thing is kind of a nebulous, it, it's ever-changing with a golf course. You don't know whether you're going to need irrigation over here, your clubhouse is going to be done over here, your cart, you know, barn needs to be done. Part of the values that Peter talked about was conversion of the golf carts to electric carts. That's going to be huge money. You've got 8,500 carts, you're going to have plugins for 100 carts, so you've got to be kind of careful, and the mutual incentive value to this is, is for the extended lease is very important. As to the timing, and Bob talks about, I just saw this document, I had to be in Colorado for five weeks, so I just got back. So this is the first rough draft, but Peter and I and Chuck Eastman met with Peter about a month and a half ago with the finance director. We went over a lot of those criteria. I, I can tell you that there's operators who are aware that this property is coming up. There are, there are operators that are going to just plug in the numbers, they're going to look at, they know what, they're going to find out what the numbers are real quick. This is a sort of boilerplate process for them. They're, they're going to know whether they can do this or not. The town's job when we evaluate all of this is to make sure we get it right, and we get it right now. I mean, this course has been operating for over 20 years very successfully, and the, the current operator, we can't say enough good things about. We chose the right one. 10 years ago, there was one bidder, part of it was, the golf industry was where it was. Also, there was a suggestion that the function that the Billy Kasper Golf was so successful in doing such a good job, that no one else, why bid when they're doing such a good job? And the town's very, very happy with that relationship. So I would hope the board votes this, you certainly can talk about it, but this is a great success story, and I hope, I hope we get it right. I know we're going to get it right. I think Peter's done a great job, especially with the evaluation with other towns and other leases, and he has a history with other courses down the Cape and other places. So I, I would hope you vote this, and I know there's going to be some comments from other people, so.
Okay. Thank you. Troy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being reflective on that other issue. That's an important service to the public. If memory serves me right, Kerry Murphy and I were both on the select board when we acquired the Falmouth Country Club, and, and he and I agree on most things, and I agree with the statement you just heard, that we have to get this right. I also, you know, agree that it's important to have a document that you can consider. When I took the training to be a certified public procurement officer in Massachusetts, I was told by the inspector general at the time that the two most challenged procurements in Massachusetts were school bus contracts and golf course management contracts. That underlies the importance of getting this right. And I think, again, this is not a content issue. The assistant town manager and the golf advisory committee have done a phenomenal job in presenting you with a comprehensive document to lease a piece of property, but I think Select Board Member Mascali is also correct, that you're being asked to tie up this property for the next potentially 30 years for a document that you received three days ago. I think that's a disservice to the board, and I think you need, deserve, must take the sufficient time that it, that it, whatever it takes to answer the questions that Mr. Mascali brought up, and questions that maybe other board members have, but you haven't developed them, because you haven't had time to review them. The chair of the golf advisory committee just told you that he saw the document for the first time a few days ago. I think that's a flawed process, and it's, it's, it's becoming a theme in things that I say to you, and it's the same thing I'm going to say in a few minutes on one of the Warren articles, that input from the select board and the public should be the priority, not the appendage at the end of the process. And, and, and conducting a process like this, where you're being asked to rush a vote, is, is a disservice. I, I'm quite certain that if you went to the provider, that they would negotiate an extension to give you the time to properly conduct this process, and that's what I would urge you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Kerry, let him go for it.
I just want to press a comment.
I got you.
Robert Young, Precinct 5. I've been on the, or I was on the golf committee for nine years, and I was chairman of the golf committee for four years, so very familiar with the operation. And as everybody has said, it's a very successful 20-year public-private golf course operation. 30-year bond payments made each year, 10 years to go. We're, we're getting to the back stretch on this. We got $3 million from the 300 committee, which was huge. Our fund balance is getting low, but in the last four or five years, it has bounced back up, and right now, our golf fund balance is 1.6 million. And since the pandemic, we have had a huge revenue share. We get our $400,000 of base rent. In addition to that, we've gotten 1.7 million, 1.7 million in the last four years in addition to that. So that has really boosted up the golf fund balance. The proposal, which I just got last week myself at the last golf advisory meeting, is asking for a 25% increase in the base rent. That's kind of a healthy, healthy jump. I think we can absorb that. However, I don't agree with the, the capital funding is kind of the hang-up here, I think. The golf course itself is in good shape. The cart paths are a little bit rough. We have a relatively new watering system, about 800,000 was spent on that. Right now, the maintenance sheds are just about done, so they're in good shape. Our biggest problem right now is the clubhouse, and in the lower level, there's water problems, there's mold problems. Things have got to be corrected. That's a town building, a town asset, and we cannot put that out to a bid with the problems that exist on that building right now. Just think of the employees that are going down in, into that. So I think this process is being rushed. I think we need to take a step back, and I think we need to address a few issues here on the capital side before we have you, Select Board, vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Just a reminder, Troy's comments, that I just saw this, we, when I met with Peter and Chuck in the finance meeting, you know, the document that, what you're seeing here is, there's almost an original document from the, original lease when it came out. It's at the point where there's a, a section in it, and you'll see it, it says Louis Rubicek gets his golf free, and that probably should be struck from the contract. So the contract that, that Peter has presented to the committee, to me, and to, and to Chuck at that meeting, and this document is here, is almost, it's almost, it's just a blueprint of where it was, so.
It's all getting negotiated.
Did I see the final draft? I just saw the final draft, but the numbers really haven't changed too much. And I, I do have some concerns as well, with the capital things. I think they can be worked out as you work out a contract, does it need to be in the RFP and defined? Probably, but those numbers can be certainly changed. But, but I think the schedule is a fairly aggressive schedule, but I think it needs to stay on at least a good track, and I hope there's a robust discussion among the board members. And I hope there's a robust discussion among the board members. You know, we hold two meetings a year, the Golf and Kaisers. We were going to meet next month here in October to make a presentation about the numbers from the course. So twice a year, you know, we ask for public input. We don't get a lot of it. I don't know why. But, you know, the public is involved. You know, the committee itself is like a three-legged stool. We answer to the public, we answer to the operator, we answer to the administration. So, you know, our committee does a great job. The administration does a great job. And again, being blessed with a good operator and this blueprint that we've done for the last 20 years, this is just a continuation of it. The numbers have changed, but this is just sort of a continuation of it.
Hold on one second, Kerry. So what you're saying is, when you said you hope we voted it, you feel it's ready to be voted and moved to the next step with the way it is?
Yeah, I mean, I think some people have brought up some issues with the capital. And again, the capital is a, I'm going to say a nebulous sort of thing at the current shift, so you've got to be, you can't define it. It's hard, especially with a golf course. And I know you don't have any kind of lease operations in a town like this, this enormity. But, you know, I think the administration's got it right. There's some numbers that, you know, and the threshold numbers that the operator is a little concerned about, but if they don't like it, they won't bid. But I think there's going to be bidders on this.
Thank you.
I get a very strong feeling.
Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Kerry. I mean, so I mean, I think what we're hearing here really is that even Mr. Murphy has indicated, I think, that that maybe it's not really ready to go forward with respect to the capital, the capital issue. I'm also going to mention that, you know, Mr. Clarkson mentioned the OIG. There is a report from the OIG that's back some time ago, but it recommends that golf course, municipal golf course leases not extend beyond five years. That is an OIG recommendation dating back to 2009. Now, things may have changed, and, you know, I also want to say, having read the OIG report, I think that Peter has done a good job of incorporating many of the suggestions that the OIG had in that report into, you know, the draft. But there is still out there this concern about, you know, a five, more, I mean, I think five years is way too short a period of time to get any kind of operator in there to do what they need to do. But on the same token, I think 25 years is is too long. My my preference might be that we table this, you know, and all of us take a little further look at at this and, you know, maybe address it at our next board meeting. That would be a thought on my part.
Others? Go ahead.
So my concern with with just tabling it is that while I understand there may be operators for whom this is pretty routine, five weeks seems like a pretty short period of time to have an RFP out already. If we delay this another two weeks, we're looking at either shortening that period or shortening the consideration period. So what I'm wondering is, and we already heard this suggestion, is, is there an option to extend the lease even by three months to give us time to have that discussion, figure out the lease terms, the length of the lease, the capital expenditure portion of it, clean up some of the the stuff that's been mentioned, put it out for six weeks, get, you know, and actually go through this process in a more measured way to get to the the right end.
That's if they'd even asked for the three-month extension for the lease. If they were going to put it out for an RFP and you were renting it, you'd have to give consent to lead, to extend the lease for three months, right?
Well.
If you were the only one bidding, and you, if I was the only one bidding, and I knew that I was there presently, and they gave me three more months, what that does to the present operator is allows his competition to come in and do that as well.
Can we even just do that?
Well, I mean, with all due respect, I mean, I think if the town and the and the operator come to an agreement, I don't know the procurement requirements. I did mention this possibility of an extension of Mr. Murphy, you know, this this morning as a as a possibility, so. But again, I don't know what the procurement, whether we could just extend it. That's a question I wouldn't have the answer to. But I think that that is a very worthwhile option to explore.
I like to give crisp answers, but sometimes I can't. So I have sought legal counsel on that question, can we extend the lease? The problem that you get into is, and I'm sure Troy could speak to this from his training, when you issue a request for proposals, part of that is you specify what the term is. And you can't just mutually, you can't, you know, for example, you can't bid out a five-year lease, and then things are going well after four years, talk to the operator and say, hey, do you want to add 10 more years to it? If that wasn't in the request for proposal, that would be an absolute clear violation of procurement laws. So the question is, can we take a a five-year lease with a five-year extension and add three months to it? You know, there's a technical no answer there. There may be a pragmatic that there isn't anyone who's going to have standing to sue you for it. So that's my answer. It's uncomfortable. We'd rather not do it, but I'm not going to say we absolutely cannot do it.
I would say it's a lot to to take this under advisement in just a few days, but when I was reading it, I didn't see anything that looked up to me that was, you know, wrong or problematic. Except for the wastewater discharge option. Seems like we've already addressed that. So that's my take on it. I mean, I understand the principle of wanting to see it sooner, and it's not a perfect world. Sometimes these things come, you know, with a little time pressure, but I feel comfortable with it myself.
A lot of build-out contracts are standardized just like that. I mean, you heard, you heard Kerry say that it, it's almost boilerplate, and there's going to be, I think, refinements to any deal you make with an RFP, that they're going to come back with requests, and you're going to come back with something else you want. You may end up getting barb exactly what you want by way of negotiation, but you've got to start, you've got to start with something that both parties can understand, and I think this represents that. So I'd be voting yes.
Unless you're fundamentally opposed to the length of term. It sounded like you were just wanted to think about it, but it's.
I mean, I, as I said before, I do have some some concerns about the length of the term, primarily because I don't think that there's enough of a of an obligation on the part of the operator to do capital improvements early on in the in the process. And they could walk away, and we're left hanging the bag, and the improvements never got done.
It's restructured like that.
So, Mr. Chair, I don't want to.
Go ahead.
So so I heard that concern, and if if the select board were agreeable to this, September 23rd is our next meeting. Allow Peter and I to work language into the contract. I'm a big concern, too, that there's no thresholds, intervals during that 25-year, as it stands now, requiring a certain investment. Peter articulated very well, we want to allow some flexibility, because I think if you restrict an operator, you present some challenges. But I'm hearing loud and clear that select board wants a little bit more specificity with regards to the the investment that would be made, 10-year, 15-year. Allow allow us to work up some language that would address that concern. And and again, if the select board, the majority is opposed to the 25 plus five extension, right now I'm recommending that because I think it's it's that time period that's going to really allow a bidder to 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 consider that investment. I just think we have to have some really strict and specific thresholds for when those investments are made. So like you said, at the 18-year mark, that don't walk out without having those investments.
Just going forward, I'm not absolutely against the the term of the lease. I'm more concerned about, you know, about the the schedule. But but, you know, one of the things that's said is, we've agreed to, you know, kind of reduce the, you know, the the payment from the from the operator with a view towards his making a profit and investing, you know, in some of the improvements, and yet we're not, you know, really setting forth what what we expect him to do. So I certainly would support Mr. Renshaw's suggestion that we put this off to our next meeting.
All right.
Can I just clarify, if we do that, where that extra two weeks comes out of the rest of the process?
Yeah. Right, that's the question.
Can we push back the the selection and approval date by two weeks to still allow five weeks for the the RFP to be out?
Yeah, the, it would have to come, we would be moving back the proposal submission deadline, moving back the select board awards lease. And so it would shrink the time that we have to negotiate the final lease and the time. So the the time between when the contractor has ink on the on the page, that they've been awarded a contract, and now they can hire staff, and they can, and they can lease the golf carts, and they can gear up for the season that starts January 1. So, you know, the the good news is that it's a slow period. You know, there's not a lot of golf happening generally in January and February. You never know, there could be some. There could be, you know, we could get into a situation where the golf course is just closed because the operator isn't isn't prepared to move forward. Again, if that's happening in January and February, you know, I don't think that's in the scheme of a 25-year lease, I don't think that's a huge deal breaker.
And as Mr. Murphy indicated, it's probably even the competitors are out there just plugging in numbers and, you know, seeing what they have to do. So I'm not sure that a two-week extension would be that detrimental to the process.
All right, so what are we going to do? We going to extend it?
Yeah, so if, so we're going to extend by two weeks, and and the board will have more time to pour over it, ask questions, make suggestions, get public input. I just want to make sure, and the town manager said we're going to look to put some more specificity around the capital improvement obligations of the private operator.
Timeline.
And a timeline to the private operator. There is a connection between prevailing wage laws and the town having more control over those capital projects. We can talk more about that at the next meeting.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we just do that, all right?
And I would just, any, if you, if any of the board members have specific questions or suggestions, please send them to us as soon as.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the public who spoke on that.
Thank you.
We are going to go into number eight. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Select Board, the town meeting warrant, as you all know, scheduled to be voted on by select board tonight, in accordance with the November town meeting schedule that the board approved, adopted. The the warrant would be published this Friday, September 13th. And importantly, the board would be voting on recommendations, as Peter mentioned earlier, on the articles at their October 7th meeting. Mr. Chairman, Select Board, the proposed November town meeting warrant includes 37 articles in total, of which 19 are financial articles, including one petition article and five community preservation articles. Four of the articles are petition articles seeking to sell town-owned parcels for affordable housing. There are six zoning-related articles, and the remainder address miscellaneous topics, which I'm going to highlight in a moment. I think the, I think the best, most efficient way to do this, quite honestly, with the time that we we have and we're running behind, is to go through.
Identify the problem, the ones that need to be spoken on?
Well, no, I was going to actually run through, I've got, I've got prepared to run through each of the 37, and then allow, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, public comments on the ones that are perhaps.
We'll do it like we hold a consent agenda. If you want to speak on one that he goes through, raise your hand, and we'll mark it, and then we'll we'll go back to, and you'll be able to speak on it.
So if I may get started, articles, and this is in your packet, a copy of the warrant, the draft, those warrants is in your packet. Articles one and two, standard for all town meetings, selection of officers and nomination of officers and hearing reports from committees and town officers. Article three is a vote to amend the Falmouth Code by adding a new section in Chapter Nine, assessors. As you all may know, the Department of Revenue recently changed the property revaluation period from three years to five. And as a result, contracts for business and personal property valuations and software platforms and whatnot should coincide with that new five-year revaluation period. So this particular article seeks to do just that, change the revaluation period or the period that the town manager can enter into contracts from three years to five. Article four seeks to rescind amounts of unissued borrowing to address projects that have been completed and expenses were much less than anticipated. Article five and six are eerily similar to last year's town meeting articles. They're similar, identical in language, but they accomplish two specific purposes. They are for the purpose of funding capital improvements. Article five stipulates approval of the article requiring a simple majority. And Article six, again, related to approval of monies for the purpose of funding capital improvements, specifically require or call out the fact that it requires a 2/3s majority votes. And like last year, the reason behind this is to ensure greater clarity so that items requiring 2/3s votes don't get mixed up with simple majority votes, so we felt that it was more clear. Article seven seeks some of money for the purpose of funding non-capital projects. This article funds items that don't meet the definition of capital and/or are under the $25,000 threshold that we set. And again, this is for non-capital projects. Article eight seeks to appropriate a sum of money to supplement the FY '25 operating budget and determine how the same shall be spent. This would be reviewed by Finance Committee, and as you all know, they're already starting, have met a couple of times reviewing the department requests. So this particular article would be reviewed and recommended by by the Finance Committee. Article nine seeks to change the purpose of the Capital Investment Stabilization Fund to combine, to a combined capital and debt stabilization fund. We had this discussion a bit last year. Feel it's important that by combining the two funds provides greater flexibility in terms of how the funds that are set aside for capital projects are managed. And also, our auditor's recommendation was that this, by by combining these two stabilization funds, really reduces, significantly reduces, the work related to manage those funds. So that was an auditor's recommendation.
And we did have a chance to talk about that at our strategic planning meeting as well.
We did. Article, Article 11 is to appropriate a sum of money to the capital and debt stabilization funds. This basically, this Article, Article 11 seeks to build up the balances in the stabilization fund that can be used to reduce the the impact of future borrowing projects. Again, reducing that reliance on property taxes by having additional funds in that stabilization, combined stabilization fund. Article 12 seeks to appropriate a sum of money from the Fire Stabilization Fund to supplement the FY '25, our current fire department budget. This would include expenses directly related to the newly added override firefighter positions. This would require a 2/3s town meeting vote. Article 13 seeks to transfer money within the fiscal year '25 budget to make necessary adjustments. As you all know, each year, there's adjustments that need to be made. In the operating budget, this article and the recommendation that will follow on October 7th with the additional details would allow just that. Article 14 is in regards to the government access programming. The state has changed and altered some of the regulations with regards to how municipalities use, utilize the cable agreement license funds. So this article basically appropriates, I think it's about $150,000 generally each year, basically allows us to appropriate those funds for appropriate use. Article 15 seeks to amend, and I should, I should mention, the next three articles, 15, 16, and 17 are zoning-related articles. Article 15 seeks to amend Chapter 240 of the zoning code of Falmouth by deleting Section 247.5, which is the Mr. Cod Mixed Residential and Commercial Overlay District in its entirety, and then replacing it. You have copies in front of you of the redline version of that language that is being proposed to be entered into this section.
I have a question about that. Is that available on the town's website for town meeting members to see?
It is. It's, it's on the Planning Board's webpage under Town Meeting Articles. They can click on that link, and it lists the redline versions towards the bottom half of that page, and then the the proposed article. But the the redline versions are on that same page, the bottom half.
Yeah, I saw them. I just wanted to make sure people know that.
Article 16.
Yes, Article 16 is a vote to, seeks to, a vote to amend Chapter 240, again, of the zoning code, Section 249.1, accessory apartments in its entirety by inserting the language that appears.
I mean, I do have a question. I don't know when, when, when we'll get to it, but I do have a question on that, so as we go forward.
Okay. Article 17. Article 17, again, a zoning-related article, seeks to amend Section 246.1B, Agricultural Districts Use Table, simply, and also Section 246.6B, Residents' Districts Use Table, by deleting all references to the accessory apartment attached and accessory apartment detached and the special permit uses. Article 18 seeks a vote to authorize the Select Board to dispose or otherwise convey two parcels of land located at Zero Locust Field Road and described, and again, the parcel ID numbers are listed. Article 19 seeks to authorize the Select Board to dispose, and I should mention, these are the, these are the petition articles, is that correct? Do I have that correct?
19 is town, 20 is, starts the petition.
That's right, I'm sorry. Article 19 is the last town article related to authorizing Select Board to dispose of properties. In Article 20 and 21, and 22 are petition articles, again, seeking a town meeting vote to authorize the Select Board to issue RFPs, Request for Proposals, to convey the parcels Article 23 is a petition article related to urine diversion, seeking a town vote to appropriate a sum of $1.9 million from Surfride Free Cash for financing a provisional pilot project consistent with any recommendations from the Massachusetts DEB, Department of Environmental Protection. The next five articles, Articles 24 through Article 28, are community preservation articles. Article 24 seeks a town meeting vote to appropriate a transfer from CPC or CPF, a sum of money to replace a 40-year-old gas-fired boiler and furnace with a more efficient heat pump. Article 25 seeks to appropriate a transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, a sum of money for the Highfield Hall exterior rehab and water abatement project. Article 26 seeks a vote to appropriate or transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, a sum of money to develop a conceptual plan for the community play space. As you recall, a couple of months ago, we shifted focus from the Davisville Road site, potentially for the all-inclusive community play space, to the Goodwill Park site. There's $24,500 left in the balance of that fund when we were looking at the Davisville Road site. This article seeks to transfer those remaining funds to the Goodwill, to allow us to expend those funds for the Goodwill site evaluation. Article 27 seeks an appropriation or transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, a sum of money to complete Shiverick Pond Public Access Improvements Project located on town-owned property at Kathleen Bates Road, Zero Kathleen Bates Road. Article 28 is to seek a vote to appropriate or transfer from the Community Preservation Sum of Fun of Money, a sum of money for the Bell Tower Tennis Court Rehab Project located, again, on town-owned property at Zero Bell Tower Lane. Article 29 is a article seeking a vote to appropriate per MGL Chapter 32, the sum of $75,000 to the Falmouth Contributory Retirement Special Military Fund. This is for the purpose of paying retirement contributions for employees with a call to active military duty, and to determine how that money is spent. I've been told that in the past, monies that were kind of allocated for that purpose were insufficient, so this adds additional funds to cover those expenses, those payments. Article 30 is another article that addresses some issues within MGL Chapter 32. It's being recommended by the Retirement Board, providing an annual stipend to board members of the Falmouth Retirement Board in the amount of $4,500 per year. There's a note that indicates that said increase is to be effective January 1st of 2025. Article 31 is a vote to amend the town's position classification plan. Currently, it's contemplated to add two new positions, a stormwater engineer and then HVAC, air conditioning technician. Importantly, we may or may not be funding these positions in the FY '26 operating budget, but this would give us the flexibility. We've identified a need for both of those new positions to be added to the classification plan, so this article would allow that to move forward. Article 32 is the short-term rental article that the Planning Board and its working group has been working on diligently for the past couple of months, several months. Following several months of collaborative work of the Short-Term Rental Working Group and thoughtful feedback from the public, the group crafted a bylaw that sets out requirements, rights, and obligations for operators of short-term rentals. The proposed bylaw preserves the ability of homeowners to rent their property, but prohibits the corporate ownership of short-term rentals. It requires operators to provide information, such as 24-hour contact information, a trash and recycling plan, and proof of no outstanding taxes.
Question, if I may, is it correct that the effective date is January 1, 2024?
No.
Or is that a typo?
Typo.
I mean, I assume it is.
I'm sure if people want to comment on that, so you should probably hold that. I've got it written down, just you raised your hand.
Okay.
We'll get you first, we'll go in succession.
Article 33 is seeking a vote by town meeting to amend the Code of Falmouth, Section 172, rental property by repealing and deleting portions of sections and inserting new provisions. Article 34 is a complete rewrite of the noise bylaw. The proposed bylaw creates objective standards for determining the level of noise that is acceptable for very specific circumstances. As you all know, the current bylaw uses terms like loud, excessive, or unusual noise. The proposed bylaw replaces these subjective terms with specific decibel thresholds for determining what is a violation of the bylaw. The proposed bylaw also sets acceptable hours for construction and the use of landscaping equipment, which are not presently specified in any bylaw or regulations.
I imagine there's gonna be-
I've got them written down, too.
Article 35 is, well, the last three of these articles, 35, 36, and 37 are zoning amendment-related articles. Article 35 seeks a vote to amend Chapter 240, Section 240-9.6, home occupancy. Article 36, again, related to amendments concerning Chapter 240, the Zoning Code of Falmouth, seeks to amend Section 243.2, definitions, by deleting all references to home occupation and home-based service business, and inserting the definition as it appears in your packet of home-based business. And lastly, Article 37 seeks a town meeting vote to amend Chapter 240 of the Zoning Code by deleting Article 10, non-conforming uses, structures, and lots in its entirety, and replacing it with language that appears in the draft warrant in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. We'll go back to Article 32.
Could we just, for a moment, I asked for Article 16, I think? Amend chapter, accessory apartments? We just, Jed, if I may? So this was as a result of the new bill that the governor just signed recently, Affordable Housing Bill. And that bill said that you could not, or that communities couldn't impose occupancy, you know, restrictions with respect to the main dwelling and the accessory dwelling. So the purpose of this change is to comport with that new law. But my question is, with respect to the provision there that says rental period shall not be less than six months, and weekly, monthly rentals are expressly prohibited, is that new language?
No, it is not. That's existing language that's proposed to remain.
Okay. Thank you.
Step up.
That's it? Thank you.
Ma'am? Short-term rental, Article 32.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Select Board. My name is Elizabeth Klein. I want to speak in support of this article and take a moment to thank the Short-Term Rental Working Group that was formed as part of the Planning Board, in particular, Mrs. Charlotte Harris, who recognized the urgency of the housing situation in Falmouth and did a very wonderful job of moving the group along and staying focused on our work. So I just wanted to recognize that this bylaw represents a chance to move forward on something that was identified as a priority action in year one of Falmouth's housing production plan. Maintaining and regulating short-term rentals is in there, and so I just want to contrast that to some changes, because I was also reading the Housing Demand Study from 2014. And in that study in 2014, the authors noted that everyone interviewed, as a part of that study, 32 individuals who are familiar with housing in the town of Falmouth, all identified affordable rental housing for young workers is a critical need in our community. So that's a 10-year-old document, and now, 10 years later, we're discussing one aspect of managing housing in Falmouth. And in that 10-year period, we have lost a significant portion of rental units. And so this bylaw represents one component of a larger strategy that our town can use to try and make it accessible and available for people who are living, trying to live and work here. If you also look at some of the demographic changes that have happened, the people living here in the age range of 25 to 44, so really critically important age range of individuals, is down from 30%, which was in 1990, to 18% in 2020. So we are losing workers, and if you ask folks who work at MBO, who work at HUI, who work at Cape Cod Hospital, who work in various positions in town government and other public sector employees, they will identify a lack of housing as a critical issue. They all know it's been a big theme of tonight's meeting. So, again, just want to reiterate my support of this article as one small sector of our attempt to try and make housing more affordable and accessible for all people who want to live in Falmouth.
Thank you very much.
Bob?
I'd like to comment on that one as well.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I know that this is kind of short notice for the board to have this on warrant when we haven't had a chance to talk about it. I did ask that it be put on the warrant, and it was already on its way. I hope that we can maybe talk about this at our next meeting, or if not, the one after, so that the board can discuss the document and make sure that the wording is, seems to be appropriate. And I hope that if the Planning Board has an interest, that they will take it up as well in advance of town meeting. I mean, I feel like it's a good document, but we should all talk about it, make sure that we're all supportive of it before we get to town meeting.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, I share Mr. Brown's sentiment and would probably object that we're getting this tonight to deal with, but I think the difference here is that it was the result of a very vigorous, good group, that the meetings were open to the public, there was public input and so forth. I do think there are some questions about the way the bylaw is written, some of which were brought to our attention from one of our residents who had some issues. So I'm prepared to say, okay, with respect to this article, but I do have some questions as we go forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
All set?
Thank you very much, Erica Edwards. I would also like to speak in-
Ma'am, name for the record.
Erica Edwards, sorry. I would also like to speak in support of this. This is not a reinvention of the wheel. These very similar verbiage has already passed in P-Town, in Truro, in Eastham, and it's obviously a sweeping-the-nation problem, but it's already coming down the Cape. So we would just be another in the line of everybody on Cape Cod, really trying to focus more on that, that lost segment of people for housing.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Article 34. Barbara?
Three minutes.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. To begin my brief remarks, I would like to draw a parallel between the deliberations of the Select Board and your colleagues over at the School Department. The School Committee has a policy that when there is an important issue, a public policy issue before them, and Select Board Number Goldstone was part of this, that they always have a first hearing to present an issue, and then a subsequent hearing to vote. And that allows not only the elected officials, but, again, the public, to have an opportunity to deliberate, to provide feedback, and to present alternatives. We just heard about the Short-Term Rental Working Group, working together and presenting a good result. Unfortunately, with this article, that sort of robust public discussion has not occurred. And Barbara will speak specifically to what I think she and I both consider to be technical flaws on a particular portion of this proposed bylaw that limits noise from pickleball play to that similar to a cat meowing. That's quite literal. And so if we're gonna restrict to that level the use of private property, right? This proposed bylaw limits the use of private property and subjects private property to a permit, and the permit granting authority is not this board, it's the town manager. That deserves a robust public discussion. And again, if you received this proposed bylaw three days ago, it's nearly impossible for you to have the ability to digest it, to think about it, to deliberate as a board, to seek public input, and then put it before the town's legislative body. What's being proposed is backwards. You don't put it on the warrant and then seek public input, right? The process is you seek public input, put it on the warrant, and if you, the board, the Select Board, wants to have a public discussion, the law is crystal clear, you have unfettered and complete authority when it comes to the warrant. And I would propose to this article that you exercise that authority and exercise this article from the warrant. Thank you.
Mr. Clarkson, do you anticipate spirited debate on a town meeting floor on this?
Most certainly, but I think the place where the debate should commence is here in this room with this board, and that town meeting debate, the legislative body, have their debate as a result of your decision as to whether or not the issue deserves to be before town meeting. That is the first important step in the process that I think is being ignored here.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Sure.
I mean, following along with your comment and Mr. Clarkson's, I mean, you know, I'm not sure town meeting is the best forum to be, you know, making amendments from the floor, you know, sometimes mistakes are made. I mean, look what happened with our regulations with respect to plastic utensils, you know, and that whole thing that happened at town meeting, but as a result of, you know, someone getting up, we pulled back, and we had a good working group come up with very acceptable and good regulations. I think, you know, apropos of what Mr. Clarkson's saying, I think that is a better opportunity than having that debate, if you will, at town meeting.
You know, to a certain extent, I agree with you, but I'm a true believer, and I learned this from you, that by way of, you're a town meeting member as well, right?
I am not.
Oh, okay. So when we go to town, there are spirited debates at town meeting, at precinct meetings, Barbara, right?
Yep.
And a lot of this gets hashed out, which generates questions and solutions and proposals and denials at those meetings as well. On something such of this magnitude, you're gonna have, in my opinion, an element of the public that cares about this and doesn't care about this. Us debating among the five of us, I find it more important or more beneficial for me to have the public reach out to me, to go to the meetings and debate those. And you may not agree with me, but that helps me more than the five of us banging heads about what we think we know about this.
I don't want to bang heads, I want to hear from the-
No, no, I understand, and that's how I hear from my constituents.
Yeah, no, I realize that, but not everybody's a town meeting member, not everybody is going to precinct meetings. This is a town-wide, you know, proposal, and, you know, with all due respect, I think, you know, this presupposes some policy decisions that this Select Board has never taken, made a policy directive with respect to the decibel level, for instance, the dichotomy between pickleball and construction vehicles, and very importantly, with all due respect to Mr. Renshaw, this idea that the town manager is the person who's gonna be issuing, you know, permits for clay and private, you know, private property. So I think this is something that should have been, you know, discussed in an appropriate forum, and that's my opinion.
Sorry, Ms. Snyder.
Don't.
Yeah, sorry.
Don't be silly. Barbara Snyder, Pickleball Working Group, advisor to town manager, with Troy Clarkson, I might add. And so with a little research, I'm standing here looking at a list of 17 towns and what they do for decibel noise limits. and a half, forty-seven, let's just say, for a decibel. Many towns have chosen to go ten decibels above ambient noise, some have gone to distance restrictions, but in the towns of which nine of them are all Massachusetts towns, nobody has as low as you're proposing for a decibel rating, other than Centennial, Colorado, which is what was used to form ours. Everybody else, the low is fifty, the high is seventy-five. Quincy, for example, being seventy-five. Somerville being seventy. Marlborough being fifty-three. Everett being fifty. Boston, seventy, and so on. So I wanted to point that out. Had this said fifty, Mr. Zine and I, this morning at six-thirty in the morning, actually did our own sound study. We actually went out with two devices, and we actually measured sound at SWIFT and at the Trotting Park proposed site. We had a hard time, other than standing from here to jet, coming up with anything that would be over fifty. Other than normal talking, hitting the rackets, all that didn't bring that noise level up. When we did a hundred and fifty feet away at Trotting Park, we couldn't come close to this. This would have been just fine, what you're proposing. That said, fifty would be a more normal wiggle room, and also, where I really think we're going to have problems is you're asking to control private property courts with a permit, when there have been no arguments among neighbors, when neighbors themselves have come to a decision whether they are bothered by the sound or not bothered by it, with people who currently have courts that they've paid a hundred thousand dollars to put in. And so I think that that is a huge overreach. I think that forty-seven is a really low number. I am currently invited to go speak at a homeowners association on Thursday to show them the quieter owl rackets, which are the one of two types of rackets approved for quiet play. This morning, we got ten decibels less using those owl rackets with noise, just to give you that. That's where this industry's going. So for us to make this so restrictive and to reach into private courts, I really feel this is a mistake. I think you're going to hear about it loud and clear between now and town meeting. I wish you had held a public discussion on this, to hear this first, and I am only sharing with you the two things that jump right off the page and say, no. And that's what I wanted to share. So I hope you will take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Peter can help me out with some of the details. So, so months ago, and the working group was instrumental in this, the town commissioned retain the services of an acoustical engineer that went out and did a pretty extensive study. Some folks would dispute maybe, you know, the methodology that was used, the paddles that were used. But importantly, I want the board to know that the forty-seven decibels that are listed currently as that threshold, Centennial, Colorado is an example that uses that, but there was a further kind of rationale that we applied towards that, putting it in, in the town of Falmouth's November town meeting warrant. The results of that study, and I'm not an acoustical engineer, but there was a statement in the study by Ascentec, the engineers, that when you look at the proximity to the nearest home, forty-four decibels would be the worst-case noise level associated with pickleball, from, from the court, from the courts to the nearest residence. The, a couple of the members of the Pickleball Working Group reached out, and rightfully so, tried to get some kind of a second opinion, and a person submitted a written article, and that article was submitted to me by members of the Pickleball Group, Working Group, that suggested that, and this is known, and I've seen it appear in other studies, that there's an attenuation or a reduction in noise level based upon the direction of play in relation to the, the, the recipient of the noise. So in other words, if you look at a ninety-degree angle between the direction of play, the orientation of the courts, with the nearest residence, and that's the purpose of the study, measuring what that noise is, there's a five-decibel attenuation or reduction if that measurement, if that, if that noise travels ninety degrees perpendicular to the direction of play. So based upon that fact, and, and this was brought up again in that article that was generated by the gentleman that was asked to review the Ascentec, our town retained acoustical engineers' report, the worst-case scenario attributed to pickleball noise would be thirty-nine decibels. So again, I wanted the Select Board to, to understand that it wasn't us simply selecting Centennial, Colorado, forty-seven DBA, and, and the fact that that was successfully defended in, in, in Centennial, Colorado. We used on-the-ground analysis and evaluation from our own acoustical engineer, and, and I was confident, based upon the information that was subsequently submitted to me, and I mentioned the, the review of that Ascension or town commission study, I was confident the forty-seven DBAs was a reasonable number. I was, I was concerned if we started creeping that decibel higher, and I honestly, again, I'm not an acoustical engineer, I don't know what difference the delta of three DBA, three decibels, would make if, if the community would be more supportive of fifty DBA versus forty-seven. I think it was suggested just recently by, by Dr. Schneider that that number was kind of a minimum, and some municipalities in Massachusetts use it. I just wanted the board to know that there was some, some rationale and, and thought put into the forty-seven DBA that's currently appearing in the draft proposed article.
I'm just speaking as a resident. I think the key here on the noise bylaw and the, even the short-term rental, it says right in the warrant on petition of the Select Board, and the Select Board just got it. I, I mean, you can put it on town meeting floor, and there can be a debate about it, but by putting these things on the warrant, you're basically saying we are standing behind this article. And to me, I, I just don't understand why, you know, within a few, how within a few days, if there are questions about this noise bylaw article and, and other articles that are on petition of the Select Board, they're not petitioner articles, they're the Select Board saying, we're putting this on the warrant, this should have been done a month ago. There should have been a public hearing on these articles and taken all the content in, and then refined the language, and then we're here tonight to put this on the warrant, an article that you stand behind. So I, I tend to agree with some of the comments that have been made. We've seen this before, you know, and I've objected publicly about guideline changes, funding guideline changes, you know, permitting changes. It's very difficult for the members of the public to have to look through three hundred pages of a Select Board packet three days before a hearing to be able to respond to anything that's being adopted on a Monday night. And, you know, we've asked in the past for having public comment on these things before the board votes in more than three days. So I think this is another example of, I agree with Mr. Clarkson, that there should be more discussion on these articles, and there should be a public debate.
Scott Stone?
So I want to commend Mr. Renshaw, I think, for tackling a lot of really big, longstanding or pre-existing issues in, in your first year, and this is definitely one of those, and there definitely was a request by the Select Board to, to address this in an objective way. That said, I'll, I'll be blunt, I'd like to see us pull this from the warrant. It's for exactly the reasons that Ms. Moynihan just mentioned. It says at the request of the Select Board, and what we're supposed to be voting here tonight is not, should we change this, should we consider that, right, it's, does it go on the warrant or not? And this is the first that we've seen of it. Honestly, I have the same problem with the Short Term Rental Working Group, but understand that there has been an extensive public input and consensus process there, can, can get on board with that one. Would like to have seen a, a process where the planning board and the Select Board, perhaps even together, had met to go, go through that and, and really make sure that we're behind every technical aspect of it before we put it on the warrant, saying at the request of the Select Board. But in this case, you know, I, again, I, I commend the, the effort to, to tackle this, this problem expediently, but I, I think we need the time to actually make sure that we do actually, that, that this is our best work and what we want to put onto the warrant for the, the town to consider.
Doug?
I would say that I, I tend to agree with that. I know that there's been a bit of a rush because we did the entertainment license with the caveat that this would be forthcoming to make that more manageable, and we still need to go back and review the entertainment license and whether or not we want to make any adjustments to it. Does it really hurt us to hold this one out, unless you find that there's some kind of urgency that you want to share with us?
So I, so no sense of urgency, and I apologize for, for, for trying to rush this through a process that I'm still relatively new at, fifteen months in. So I appreciate the comments, and I'll, I'll take it to heart and do better next time. My concern, if, if, if that's the correct word, is that I think it's going to be a challenge to cite a future pickleball complex without some kind of an objective standard. So I think this delays potentially that project from going forward. I'd have a hard time recommending spending, you know, millions of dollars on a project that I thought was going to receive significant-
That's understandable, right?
Public, uh, pushback.
And given all the people asking for pickleball courts, I guess, I didn't understand why you'd take that as more of an urgent request.
Similar to, to Ms. Goldstone, I was going to vote to remove the noise bylaw from the warrant.
So do, um, has everybody had a chance to speak on this? Sure.
Very quickly, just in response to the timing, and I appreciate that Mr. Renshaw and Peter Johnson Staub have both worked with town council to get this done, because we talked over and over about the need to go to community preservation and ask for money for courts, but we couldn't do it without a sound bylaw. If it's a month from now or two months from now, if we bring it to get something that you feel you want to put on the next town warrant, it will be, we can do it like we were going to originally, which was coinciding with a request to build the courts. Because once we know what we're dealing with, we know where we can cite them, and we can defend the position.
Just make sure you're here, Barbara, when, when the other horde comes in.
I finished my doctorate and asked my husband if I could go to law school, and he said, no. So that was that.
All right.
But thank you. I, I just wanted you to know, we, we totally are willing to work forward and make this still work. We're working to get more courts. We also want to save the courts we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, including the private ones. Thank you.
Heather, do you want to make a motion to adopt eight with the caveat of dropping?
To adopt the warrant with the removal of Article thirty-four.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think that's the right thing to do.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Hold up, what?
So I, I wanted to, to mention one thing, and I was remiss. Town council pointed out in Article twenty, I believe it is, Article twenty?
Nineteen.
A, in Cindergars authorizing Select Board to dispose a portion of land located at Zero West Falmouth Highway. It lists currently, Maury, do you want to speak to?
Sure.
What the issue you just identified is?
So when I drafted this, it didn't occur to me until I was watching the town planner's presentation this evening, that the location at Zero West Falmouth is comprised of two parcels, and I left one of the parcels off. So I would ask that Article nineteen be amended to add the second southern parcel, which has a, a sister's parcel ID number two-six-zero-four-zero-six-two-A-zero-zero-zero.
Heather, you want to tackle that with your, with your motion?
Yes, please. So to, uh, to adopt the warrant with the omission of Article thirty-four and amendment of Article nineteen to reflect that there are two parcels to be disposed or otherwise conveyed at Zero West Falmouth Highway.
Very well done.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Maury, for that. Consent agenda. Thank you, folks, for hanging in.
Thank you, everyone.
Consent agenda, licenses. If anybody wants to hold it, let me read them all, and then we'll hold it, all right?
Consent.
Okay, so, number one of the licenses, consider approval of an application for special one-day all-alcoholic beverage license, Boston Society of Landscape Architects, Inc., to be exercised at Auto Camp, Card, located at eight-thirty-six Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, Tuesday, nine-seventeen-twenty-four, uh, nine-seventeen-twenty-twenty-four, from three PM to nine PM. We have administrative orders. Consider approval of an appoint, of the appointment of John Dillon as the Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center CIVOC representative to the Veterans Council Committee. B, consider granting permission to withdraw five hundred dollars from the beach donation account number twenty-eight dash six-three-two-five, uh, five-six-five-five dash forty-eight-thirty for the David, Dr. David Garber Dare to be Great Award given to the lifeguard during the annual banquet. Uh, C, consider granting permission to withdraw seven thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty cents from the beach donation account twenty-eight. Should I be reading that account number?
No, you don't have to.
To fund the beach, sure, everybody else will draw out of there too. To fund the Beach Department Staff Award Banquet, which will be held at the Flying Bridge on Wednesday, August fourteenth. D, consider the acceptance of the New England Endurance Events Falmouth Sprint Triathlon twenty-four donation. Consider appointing a temporary registrar in the event that in the, an existing registrar is unable to fulfill their duties during the recount for the Office of Senator and the General Court, of, in the general court in the Republican State Primary on Thursday, September twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Michael Palmer, town clerk, and also chairman of the Board of Registrar and Voters. We're anticipating the Secretary of the Commonwealth is going to order a recount of the Republican State Senate District Plymouth in Barnstable County.
Yeah.
We've scheduled that to be held on, on Thursday at the Herman Room in the library, nine AM the morning, and I want to acknowledge town council, Moro Keefe's guidance in making sure we're complying with all the regulations and laws and rules that we have to comply with to get this done. One of them is have a full complement of the Board of Registrars in order to sit in judgment of any challenge ballots to determine the, the intent of, of the voter and whether that would make a difference in changing the outcome of, of this election. It's going to be held throughout the eight towns of this district, but Falmouth is one of them, and I welcome, actually, the opportunity to do a recount. It just gives the people of the town of Falmouth confidence in what we do here for elections and how elections are run here, to see that, that we are, don't have a suitcase full of ballots sitting on the table. I think it'll give us confidence in our election system by having this recount, so I think-
Do you have anybody in mind, Mike?
Yes, so that's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm going to do. You guys all want to go home. So I'm, I'm going to suggest that you appoint Catherine O'Brien Bumpus as the temporary in the event that one of our registrars has symptoms of COVID, has not recovered from those symptoms by, by Thursday morning. But by appointing Catherine O'Brien Bumpus to, to fulfill the obligation for this recount, that would be my recommendation to you.
And we all know that she's got experience in this already.
Absolutely. She's well, well-versed in elections and, and what the intent of the border would be. So I think she'd be a great-
Do we need to move that? Yeah. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Catherine O'Brien Bumpus.
We're moving the consent agenda, the whole thing? We're opposed to?
I'm going to move that one item.
Should have held this to have the discussion, but that's fine. I mean, the bottom line is you're accomplishing appointing Ms. Bumpus.
Yeah, whatever the proper procedure is, but-
Well, I would move that we appoint Catherine O'Brien Bumpus as the- All right.
Aye.
Okay, let's go.
Thank you.
What have we got left? We got town-managed supplemental?
No supplemental.
Okay. Select Board reports. Heather?
Attended the first meeting of the newly renamed DEIB Committee last week, and they are moving into or resuming a body of work now that they're through the renaming and the new mission statement and functioning well. So it was a nice meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Muscali.
Yeah, I attended the bike and pedestrian committee meeting, which I mentioned before during the presentation from Mr. McConerty. There was a presentation from Eversource. We appreciate Eversource's cooperation, but they are very concerned that construction plans be available and reviewed before any action, any work is done on the bike path. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muscali. Mr. Brown.
I just attended Don Lincoln's retirement just briefly, and I was concerned that I was ill, so I wished him well. And I also attended Joel Lennox Retirement Party and spent a little more time because I wasn't feeling ill. And that's about it.
All righty, well, if that's all.
Oh, I guess I should tell you that I met with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. Did I already mention that one? Is that from?
No, you haven't mentioned that.
Okay, that was at the Udi College. She took time to meet with Cape and Islands municipal leaders, and we expressed concerns about various items of interest around the Cape, and one of which was I asked to consider a little more leadership on getting rid of the caps for solar, and which, as I promised I would, and she was interested in my harebrained scheme to have giant battery storage everywhere so that they could better implement the renewables because they're really struggling to implement them. So she seemed interested in that, so. She's really great about coming and spending time and listening and writing things down and following up, so I really like her.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.[1741.71]